Laura, can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you. Hi.
Even a couple of weeks. I mean, the way the analogy I may use is, I don't know, is it wise to go on a road trip with a big RV when there's a gas shortage? You know, you know, you may get gas, you may not. Don't know. I know I for one wouldn't do it. I don't know if it's appropriate analogy, but that's the way I look at it as well. So I'm certainly in support of masking in orange. I would even go as far as yellow. But we can debate that as well. But that's kind of my two cents. So thank you.
Sure. Thanks, George.
John, another thought that maybe is somewhere in the middle there is that I would support changing the wording to requested, encouraged, something more. I know it's just verbiage, but something that's more like optional sounds like we don't care. I think it is evident that there are people who do care about that. And so if that might be helpful to consider a verbiage change.
Okay. Laura, can you hear us?
Um, it's a bit of a struggle. I can hear you now.
Okay, well, before, if you have any commentary before you make it, would you just confirm that it's impractical for you to be here and that you you are alone?
I am alone and I'm out of state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead with your comment.
I have not had enough ability to hear to understand what you're even discussing at this point. The audio was off for at least 12 to 13 minutes.
Okay, we haven't gotten very far in the discussion, the primary. If I can just try to sum up where we are. We're talking right now about whether masks, whether there would be a status level at the at the Salk Hegan in the Salk Hegan Cooperative School District where masks would be required and be at what level would that would that trigger be available? And Stephanie had discussed making that mask requirement at status orange. Pam had showed support for that. George had sort showed support for that and suggested perhaps it makes sense to have that at status yellow. And Christie has not expressed her agreement or disagreement with the proposition, but has asked some some questions about the matter.
Okay, I am very comfortable with no mask at yellow. I could go either way for mask or no mask at orange.
Okay, thanks, Laura. Yeah, go ahead, Pam. Okay. Any further discussion before my comments?
I'm not very often that being like, no, I hate the site view. But one concern I have is I, you know, I spent some time reading back over all those emergency orders the governor had, right? All through the height of the pandemic and we didn't have vaccinations. And the one thing I know, meaning this is school, so I, when I looked at it, I think it started November 20th of last year, 2020, with a mask mandate in public. So if you're going into any indoor, public or private space with a mandate, I thought, well, there's a good place to look for mandate advice, right? And he went through some things, and at the time it didn't apply to schools. That's not really where I'm going. Where I'm going is that he listed out some people who might be exempt, just talking about exemptions right now. People with a medical condition or disability that prevents mask wear or other face covering. And I know that some of the discussion we had was that, well, we'll allow those people, I think, if I understand, will they can come to school masks, but they must supply a doctor's note. And that's been difficult because something, especially if it's social, emotional, first of all, kids are having trouble getting in with health. If they have already been the one, that may be an issue. And the reason I bring it up is because after the governor goes through all these things, obviously, when we eat lunch, we're not going to have a mask on, some of those practical kinds of things.
Sorry about that. Um, then what he says is that any person who declines to wear a mask or cloth face covering because of a medical or developmental issue or difficulty breathing shall not be required to brief documentation or other evidence verifying the condition. And I know that's something people probably are uncomfortable with. Could you get a couple slipping through the cracks, you know, in an orange status, right? That's what I'm talking about. Who, I mean, I think the the pressure from their peer group, from their teachers is going to be on if you are able to wear the mask. But do we want to try to winnow out every single case that may or may not be what we think that is able to wear a mask, especially given that in both emergency orders, both the one that we were under and I'm calling emergency order, please correct me if it's something else. But what the power we give to Adam, there's a penalty that if you won't wear the mask, we ship you out. I imagine there are warnings. I imagine you don't just see a kid in the hall and call the police. But but so, for instance, I mentioned to you all that I have a daughter who is often willing to wear the mask, but after a certain amount of time is unable to. And so I think of children like her. Could we get a doctor's note? She probably could get a doctor's note, but but we may have a doctor who would disagree with her and say, no, you can wear the mask. Maybe it is safe for her, but it is not ideal for her. I don't know. I would feel more comfortable if we're going to see masks are required, if we used the governor's wording that we're not going to take a note, especially at the high school level, we're not taking a note. We're going to trust you that if you're not wearing a mask, it's because you have a good reason to do so. So that's just my two cents, but I base it on the governor's executive order that we extended from November through June of of this year. And so I guess in that case, what I'm actually wanting to do is to amend Pim's emotion, not emotion, just your motion, but to amend Pim's motion that we are not necessarily going to require a doctor's note, but that we're going to, at that point, if masks are required, that we would trust an individual who's not wearing a mask has a developmental or medical reason for not doing so. And we won't be policing that the same way that our current emergency order is is offering.
I'd like to make a suggestion on on you. Feel free to make that as an amendment or as a motion on its own. It's a pretty fundamental matter as to whether or not masks could be required at any level. So we're having a motion on the table to do it. There are exceptions that might make sense to vote on separately as to how that might be implemented. I don't I don't know if people agree with that in terms of getting the main issue settled and then refining it further.
Yeah, for me, that amendment would allow me to say, okay, go ahead. The school's about to close. Go ahead. Tell everybody they have to do it, knowing that those who cannot know that they cannot, and they they then would not have the pressure of having to suddenly find documentation if we go from one day to the next and we're suddenly in orange. Because that could happen right now that that. So that's my justification for making the amendment now. That would make a difference for whether I I would support that.
Fair enough. So are you making the motion?
Yeah, but maybe someone wants to word it better. The motion is just that we we would let a student and their family determine if they are able medically or developmentally or mental illness wise able to wear the mask.
Okay.
Not anticipating that it will be a large number of people.
Right. Is there a second to Christie's motion?
I'll second.
Laura's second. Any discussion on the matter? Of the of the motion? Yeah, go ahead, Steve. Thanks, Steve. Any other discussion? I have something to say, but I'd like to give the other members a chance. Go ahead, Stephanie.
I support Steve on what he said.
Okay. Laura, do you have a comment? Laura, do you have a a comment on the matter on the Christie's? On the, on Christie's motion to amend the, Pim's motion for masks in, in orange?
My, my only comment is can you speak into the microphone? And I am happy to support no mask in orange. I think it might be a cleaner year if we just have no mask at all. And that's the main, I just think it might be easier for administration to manage the year, to have them optional. And I know, I can speak for my own student. She's more than happy to wear a mask if, if requested by the principal. And, you know, if it's supported and promoted. Optional.
Okay. Just to clarify, Christie had made a motion to amend, and the substance of her motion was to enable, essentially enable families to attest that their student was unable to wear a mask without the validation of a licensed medical professional. Is that fair, Christie?
Yeah, and again, I'm not going beyond the governor's emergency order to the height of the second wave here in New Hampshire. So I, I, I appreciate Steve, your position that you would like universal masking. And I think there are lots of people who would, would like that. Might, might it prevent one case? Perhaps it might, but you're at, you're putting a strain, I mean, which, especially because Adam's saying, we're not going to have universal masking at that point. The students who need to not be masked are not going to be masked. All we're doing is saying, hey, maybe the, the strain of having to suddenly get a medical note would be removed from that family.
Okay.
Then if I'm understanding that correctly, then why don't we just put masks at every level? And then anyone who says, well, I can't wear one because for some medical reason or whatever reason without showing proof, then they can opt out. So that would make it easy. So just make masks at green, yellow, orange, blue, black, gray. I don't care what color you call it. And then anyone could just opt out and just make it easy. Call it a day.
Stephanie.
So my question would be, what do we do if 100 students, 200 students, it just keeps growing, they're like, I don't need to wear masks. What do we do? That's my concern with that. What do I do? Now we have the whole school because of peer pressure, not wear masks, because they're like. That would be my concern that we don't have, I'm not, I, I get where you're coming from. It's very tricky.
I just, it seems like the peer pressure in this town.
But I think when we're heading towards red, we need to do something. And something that Maddie had, had spoken to before was that the students said they were willing, you had, guys had feedback that they were willing to do whatever they needed to do to stay in school.
So that exactly speaks to your question, right? Because so if the community council, the students are saying, we're going to do whatever we need to do to stay in school, then the peer pressure then becomes, hey, we've got to stay in school.
Hopefully, right?
Well, maybe Maddie should speak to.
But what do we do? I mean, if we say it's a, we have nothing to go back on.
Yeah, I could definitely see people just like taking off their masks and being like a lot, like a big amount of people. Like if some people have like a good reason for not wearing their mask, others might be like, well, if they don't have to wear their mask, I don't have to. So I feel like that's kind of like my worry with this. But I also, I understand like how it could be hard to get healthcare. I'm, or yeah, like a doctor's note, I'm really not too sure.
Uh, go ahead Pam.
So I want to kind of look for a middle ground and say, you know, we may not have to be medical note, could be, I think, important that it's a, however, there's a lot of other things we have parental permission. So if a parent likes a note beginning of, because my child has issues wearing a mask over two hours or whatever, or whatever the case may be. To me, that's sufficient as well. Again, again, because a lot of what we discussed last week was giving the parents the option. So this kind of gives that option to a parent at the orange level. The opportunity, I doubt not the way a lot of this. But for the most part, unless someone does a hard sell on their parents to tell them to write a note when they know darn well that it's orange status, that I doubt we can have joy to do.
I would be willing to withdraw my motion, my amendment if Pim wants to reword that. I think doctor note or parent note would cover what my concern is.
Um, is there a second on the amendment to the amendment?
Can we, can we?
We should vote on the one amendment as, as, as mod, so you withdraw it.
Do you want to withdraw and then read words?
Is there a second for the with, uh, proposed withdrawal?
This is for clarification, so Christie is, is withdrawn or, but I'm back to the original. Except for now, I want to add in that in the orange level status, that a student, if they bring a note, either a medical, from a medical professional or a parent at the beginning, either of the year or of when we go to whatever, to the orange status level, that, that is the reason, the only reason why a student may take a mask off or not wear one at all, you know, depending on their own, their own happenstance.
So you're saying that the exempt, the, the, the exemption to the requirement to wear masks is sufficiently demonstrated by parental consent, by a parental note?
And or medical.
Or a, or a medical note, but not simply a student. Correct. Okay. Is there a second for Pim's amendment?
I will second Pim's amendment.
Okay, and Laura, it seems we have a, a mic exchange. Are you, were you able to sufficiently hear what the, what Pim's amendment was? And were you, were you able to follow us up to the point where Christie had withdrawn her, her proposed amendment?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So any discussion other, I have some discussion points to share, but I want to give the rest of the board time to speak. Or maybe now's a good time for me to put mine on the table. I'll just do that. I think that we should have, with respect to the amendment, I think it's insufficient. I'm more aligned with George. If, if we're not able to have a very validated reason why a mask isn't being worn, then I think it defeats the whole entire purpose of having the mask required status. It should be a relatively high bar to overcome. And it should be for some kind of medical reason, not just because it's uncomfortable to wear. I think that that's even more so because we've already had a year in masks and especially at the high school level. I don't, I don't think on masks that it's, it's a particularly problematic for people to don masks. And so to avoid the peer, some of the peer pressure to really, you know, have a mitigation, especially at orange, that might keep the schools open. I cannot see anything that is a, a personal attestation, a test, a personal promise or claim that there's some medical reason preventing the wearing of a mask. So I, I cannot support the amendment for those reasons.
So again, the medical is not as much my concern as some of the developmental or mental health kind of issues where you might not be seeing your medical doctor regularly and we switch suddenly to orange. You may have difficulty documenting this issue that a parent is well aware of, and that would keep a handful of students still in school versus running to V-Lax. What if we stay in orange for months? And, you know, you've got a student who's managing anxiety, right? And, and maybe they could eventually get a doctor's note, or maybe they're managing it a different way. I don't know. To me, I, I think that, again, I go back to what I said last week, there has to be some amount of trust in, in our district parents.
Steve, yes.
The plan would be mask mandatory and there's an exception process.
Um, but no, this, it's exception, if this amendment, if this amendment passes and the overlying motion passes, then the way I hear it, it would be, masks would be required of all people at the, in the buildings. Except for those whose parents or medical professionals provide written documentation that there is a reason why a mask cannot be worn by the individual student. Is that fair? Okay.
So I will vote for this because I want to get masks required in orange. Either way, no matter which way this, this goes, I'm, I'm going to make a motion afterwards to, to try it without the option. So.
Okay.
Just so you know, that's coming.
Yeah. Sure.
Steve, are you saying in yellow or orange? We're just talking about orange.
Orange, orange.
Well, and if we're previewing, I would like, I will, somebody, the discussion of, I think George had raised it, it was on my mind too, whether it made sense to have masks required in yellow. I think there's a good argument there, but that's not the motion we're discussing now. So we'll hold that for, for later. Laura, do you have some comments on the amendment to the motion?
Okay, is it indoor only for the requirement in orange?
I believe that's implied in the motion. It wasn't expressly stated, but the status level system we're talking about is indoor, indoor masking requirements. So yes. You did state it, okay. So with that clarification, Laura, do you have a comment?
No, I don't.
Okay. So when we call this vote, there's no further discussion. This is a vote, not on the larger motion, yes, this is a motion, the vote on the amendment as to whether or not there can be a, something less than a doctor's, or no, no, that's not right. This is to, as to whether or not parents can claim, make the claim that their children are unable to wear a mask even in a mask required status level. Yes?
Did we vote on the original amendment, uh, original motion?
No.
Or we're voting on amendment first?
Just the amendment. Seems backwards.
No, I think we should vote on the motion.
The motion.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the most original motion is?
The original motion is, okay, the original motion is to whether masks would be required in status orange, simple. Amendment to that motion is that masks would, would be required in status orange except for those students whose parents or other, I mean, let's just say it simply with the bottom line authority is there, that's whose parents can't submit a written note, I suppose, claiming that their child, their, their student is unable to wear a mask. That's what the full motion would be if the amendment were to succeed.
I, I think though, in the original motion that Pim had mentioned that masks would be optional in yellow.
He did not make that claim.
Yeah.
He, no, no, he did not.
Yeah.
In the motion?
Yes.
And a.
Yeah, I did, but it doesn't change where it currently sits at. So it, you know, it can be, I did say it, but it doesn't.
Well, okay. Okay, so I've restated the motion a bunch of times and I don't really want to ask Danae.
You probably vote on the motion first and then vote on the other.
You have to do the amendment first.
But that's why I'm saying it sounds backwards, because you can vote for the amendment, you know, accept the amendment, but then if the motion fails, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah. So but.
But it matters because if, let me just give you a window into my thinking, why that, why this matters. I, I can never support that amendment in any motion for the mask requirement status. So if that motion pass, if that motion to amend passes, then I have to vote against the larger motion. If that motion fails, I can't support masks in orange. I think that's vitally important. I also think it's vitally important that we discuss having masks required in status yellow. We're not there in our discussion yet. So that's why it matters, the process in my mind.
But so parliamentary procedure would generally dictate that if there's an amendment to the motion, you vote on the amendment up or down before you vote on the motion? And I would feel the same way as you, opposite. So we can't go by how we feel about it.
Yes, I think it's proper that we settle the motion, whether that's the motion to amend rather, and whether that will amend the larger motion, then we can vote on the larger motion as amended or not. Yeah? Okay. Yeah, shall we call the question? It's a little bit confusing, so I'm going to restate it one more time for the record. If there's any objection to my restatement, let's settle that now and get the language right. The motion to amend is to say that the mask, the mask, when masks are required, a parent or guardian note that the mask is insufficient, that masks, that the student cannot wear the mask is sufficient evidence that the student cannot wear the mask and will be respected by the school system. Yeah.
You forgot the medical portion.
Oh, oh, well, there's already a, yes, or a medical example, or medical evidence is also sufficient. Yep, that's the question.
This is an orange only.
This is.
The motion, the amendment wasn't in orange.
The amendment was not specific to color status, but.
It was specific.
Specifics to orange as it, as it relates to the larger motion, yes. So we have to do a roll call though. Start with Laura, who's remote.
I'll vote yes to the amendment.
Pam.
Ross, yes.
Steve.
Robyn, yes.
Clever, no. Stephanie.
Grun, no.
George.
George, no.
Peters, yes.
Peters, yes. Motion passes four to three. Motion to amend. Okay. Now we're back to the motion as amended. So the motion as amended is now that masks would be required in status orange, except that students would be exempted from that requirement if they had a written evidence from a medical professional or their parent or guardian.
And there is a motion also had yellow would remain optional.
Yes.
Semi colon, and yellow remains masks optional, period.
Indoor.
Yes.
Yes.
And the current motion, and the current orange says masks are optional or required in the current writing, actually.
Well, Laura, do you have a comment on that?
I would just like to clarify that the, the masks in orange are only for indoor spaces.
Yes. Yes, I think we can stipulate that's correct. Well, I'll make a comment. I just don't understand what we're trying to do. If our goal is to keep the schools open for the in-person learning experience for as long as feasible in an ongoing pandemic, we have limited options to mitigate the risk. The top level option, according to our public health agencies, is vaccination. We are very fortunate that our student, our entire student population and, and, and staff have the ability to get vaccinated. Unfortunately, we can neither require it, nor can we ask and verify the vaccination status of any individual at this time. Therefore, we cannot know who is vaccinated and who is not. It's not a reliable. It's not a reliable mitigation, because we cannot track it, we have no metrics for it, we cannot evaluate it. We cannot put it in our metrics table, decision making table. Another top level mitigation that is recommended by our public health agencies is social distancing. When, when we have an in-person learning experience for every student, we are, we cannot also manage a social distancing as recommended by the public health agency guidance. That mitigation is largely out of our toolbox and beyond our control for the practical reality that we cannot double the size of our indoor spaces and we have no funding to set up a tent city to do that effectively for an entire school year. The next top line mitigation that is available, per the guidance of our public health agencies, is for everyone to wear their masks indoors when they're not able to socially distance regardless of their vaccination status. If we're not dogged on following that guidance, I submit that we are, that we are derelict in our duty under state law to provide a safe, healthy and clean learning environment for every student. And to provide an exception that is so easily avoided, effectively takes that tool off of the table as a mitigation strategy, and the end result is that our superintendent will call school out of session for remote learning more often than he, than otherwise, should the numbers start to ride, because there are no tools in the toolbox anymore, no high-level tools. There's some lower-level tools, some increased sanitization, sanitization is a very key and important public health agency guidance recommendation. We can encourage that, we can do some enhanced sanitization. But we can restrict lunch, we can try to leverage our indoor and outdoor spaces. But there's no top level mitigation that we can do and require of everyone in the building, including visitors, but everyone to put their masks on when the numbers start to look a little scary, start to be on the rise, so that we stand our best chance to keeping the schools open for all students for as long as possible. So I think it is, it is not only folly, but I think it's a dereliction in our duty to, I think we need to remember that we are public servants and that our own individual opinions about the efficacy of masks and, and when and who should be able to determine whether they should be worn is not us to decide as individuals, it's our choice and our duty to find some guidance out there that we can rely on, and that is the public health agency guidance. And that guidance currently says masks required indoors when you can't socially distance and regardless of vaccination status. Opening up in status green is already a bit of a push against that guidance. And, you know, we are not talking about that right now, but and our data don't support it, thankfully, we're in a, we're, we're not in a crisis mode yet, thankfully. But to take that tool off the table, which I think your amendment does effectively, is not only folly, but also a dereliction of our duty as public servants.
Well, I mean, we just, we just walked it back from what we said last week toward what you're saying. So last week, a majority of this board said, hey, let's make it optional all the way through and just let parents and students decide. I feel like we're getting a lecture, but we're walking back toward you.
Okay. Any other comments?
John?
Yeah.
Hold on a second, Laura, George Sanders first.
I'm sorry, I was at that SAU meeting online. There was more than a handful of parents that were against the masks. It was pretty heated. I will be shocked that if we do go to orange, that there isn't, there's a fair amount of parents, you cannot tell me there's going to only be like 10 kids in the entire school. There was a lot. So, again, we can't even agree to get masks before we shut the school down. Ridiculous. So then just require masks at every level again, and then just make anyone who wants to opt out of it, opt out of it. Just put it every color, green, yellow, orange, whatever color, put it in every one of them and let everyone opt out, because we're basically doing an end around. Okay, we'll put it in an orange, but you don't have to give it, you can give a doctor's note or a parent's note. Well, then if they can't get to a doctor, give them, give them a window to get a doctor's note. And if they can't get a doctor's note, then we got problems, because they can't even get into a doctor. So I don't know what we're doing, so vote whatever you want, but ridiculous.
I could have a question for the, for the administration. Is it true statement that before children are allowed to return to school, they must have a physical examination?
No.
No. Okay. Why are we doing this every year?
Why are we doing what every year?
Well, I don't mean to make a joke, this is a serious subject. We are under the belief that we, we provide our medical information every year to the, to your nurses, so maybe you request it of every student, but I, my question was whether it was required. And your answer is that it's not.
Well, forgive me, I guess I wasn't clear about your question. We do require certain information in order to register for school. I thought you were referring to someone who was symptomatic, or was sick, or was ill, or something like that.
Oh, no, my question was more broadly, certain medical information is required, including, as I understand it being apparent, a recent physical exam.
Indeed.
For all students who are registering for school every year.
Yeah, I believe it's only freshman year.
Only freshman year, okay. Well.
Yeah, I think it's freshman year for athletics only.
Okay. And athletes are separate, okay. I guess my point I'm making is there are requirements already for, to enter school, at least at some levels, for students to see medical professionals. And their respiratory condition or something would prevent them from wearing a mask, and that's, that's an opportunity that exists inherently in that process. Laura, you are next.
Okay, according to the New Hampshire website, one-third of age 12 through 19-year-olds are vaccinated in our area in Amherst, you can look it up by town. So I would say it, the school might be higher, because 19-year-olds who go to college out of state are unlikely to be in that percentage, because there are, a lot of colleges are opting vaccinations. Also, at registration, we were asked if our child was vaccinated for COVID. I don't know what the responses are for that and which, what responses have come in so far, is there any data to support the percentages?
I don't have that.
I don't believe anyone's here at the table have that data, Laura.
Okay, so ballpark figure, at least a third of our students are vaccinated, I would, based on the New Hampshire website. I think that's a pretty strong estimate.
If, yeah, go ahead.
So this goes back to the item Tim brought up at the SAU meeting about weighting the different status information, because there's different things that could take us to yellow, right? There's different things that could take us to orange. And to me, you know, looking at the number of cases in the school is number one, right? That would make a change. But you could look at the other information and say, we could end up in yellow somewhere, but we could have zero or two cases in our school, and maybe not be in, and maybe be in yellow, even though we don't have the cases in the school. So that's why I think that weighting that Tim talked about was an interesting idea. I, I, I just think, yo, the kids have been running around all summer with each other. I, that status to me doesn't warrant wearing a mask all times indoors in the school. I, there, we have how many athletes, they're going to take them off and run around, and they're going to be outside, which is the important piece, at least in the fall. We'll have to discuss what happens with volleyball and basketball and all the indoor sports. But I think at yellow, there's just too many factors that could take us to yellow that's not representative of like cases in school, which I think is key metric. And there's nothing, there's nothing in this that would prevent Mike from saying, guys, you know, we've got 20 kids in school here that have tested positive. We really would like as many of you as possible to, to put your mask on, that would really help to keep us out of yellow or orange and keep our school. I mean, I think maybe I overestimate our kids, but.
Is it another point of fact clarification for the administration? Can we require the disclosure of positive COVID test results?
We cannot require the disclosure of PHI. We can request that parents share with us. If a student is symptomatic at school, we can ban them from being in the in-person environment, but we cannot force the disclosure of PHI.
Okay. I would love for a number of active cases in school to be a real driver for our decision-making, but it is not something, it's like, who's vaccinated and who's not? It is not something that is a solid sound metric, because there's not a mechanism to get reliable data. Yes, Steve?
There, there is a mechanism, but it's, it's clunky, it's like a Rube Goldberg machine. COVID is a reportable disease, so the doctor must report it to the DHSS, the HHS, whichever way it goes. And then they, in turn, can go back and tie it to the, to a school. So we find out through the circuitous process eventually that there's a case in school. We don't, unless someone raises their hand and says, I got it, we cannot force them to tell us. You know, but eventually it gets back to us.
And I, I do think people take this very seriously, we, I've been in a school that had a small number of cases. Every parent who got that news immediately called the nurse and, and things went into place. Nobody withheld that information, to our knowledge. Anyone who went home with symptoms, the nurse called right away, hey, how's so-and-so doing? So that, that's almost a bizarre thing to me, that someone would test positive and not disclose that to the school nurse. That, that would be very odd. That wouldn't be the usual situation.
You know, we, as much as we can encourage personal responsibility, and I would like to believe that you're correct, we would. But we, we have to manage under the things that we can, the, the fidelity of the metrics that we have is as limited as the abilities to protect ourselves against the ongoing pandemic. So we have choices to make, based on those limitations. And every time we whittle away a piece of something that we can actually enforce, then it, it, it takes us further and further away from our ultimate goal, which is to keep the in-person learning experience alive and well in Amherst and Mont Vernon for as long as is feasible under the circumstances. We take, start taking the tools out of the toolbox. We'll leave the administration with fewer and fewer options, but to close the schools down rather than risk a serious problem. I would like to give, I personally, and I think it's a board member duty as well, would like to enable the superintendent to have a, a, as rich a tool, in his toolbox, in order to meet the goal. And there's a limitation in lowering the school cases, we can encourage disclosure, we can promote vaccination, but we can't really know ultimately at the end of the day what those metrics are telling us. So it's in a tough spot.
Well, what you're saying, it's not, you're not saying.
Hold on a second, hold on. And to Steve's point, that's wonderful, but by the time that, when is the case count at the state updated, it's like a weekly thing. By the time we would know, two weeks would have gone by. And if there was something going on in our school, and we were in a masks optional situation, and we didn't, weren't able to tie that back to our school district, then we've already lost. We've already lost, and so it's great to be able to get that data after the fact. But I think we need to put ourselves in a position to be able to react more in real time to the limited metrics that we have.
But what you're, what you're asking for is not reacting real time and not putting more tools in toolbox. You're asking that we demand that every student from yellow down is masked required. So that's.
No, that's not what I'm demanding.
Well, that seemed to be what you were saying.
Okay. First of all, we're not, yes, I mean, I'm going to respond a little bit. I don't know that at this point, we're talking about yellow status at all.
Oh, I'm.
Except to, except to the extent that it was, been referenced a few times, but those words didn't come out of my mouth, except earlier, I said I was an advocate to put the tool of masks in a yellow status, but that was a discussion we would have later. Just for the record. Yes, Steve?
I think we're all settled into where we're going to vote on this.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
I think we should vote on this and have more motions and more votes.
Great. Everyone like that? Okay, so let's call the question. The question is whether masks will be required indoors for all inhabitants of the building, students, staff, visitors, contractors, third parties, et cetera, except in cases where a student is exempted by either a parent's note or a doctor's note. We'll call the roll. Yes?
But the motion also mentioned that they would be optional in yellow. That's just the motion on the.
Yes, okay. And that mask would be optional in yellow status. Fair? Okay.
So, John?
Go ahead, Laura, do you have a comment before we vote?
Yeah, that's a yes vote. What does a no vote mean?
A no vote, so right now, formally, Sohagan has no reopening plan. We have an indication of a plan that came out of the SAU meeting last Thursday. So a no vote here means that, that we are basically starting from at scratch.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Laura, are you prepared to vote?
I'll let others vote first.
Okay, let others go. Yes, please.
Saying you're, that what you're proposing is that we're discarding everything we've discussed and thrown out the door if we vote no.
Um.
Rather than just the fact that you want to change the masks, right?
No, I don't. We have, we have before us is what we have before us is a school safety plan with one error in it. That was the culmination of the SAU meeting, the Amherst School Board meeting, and the Mont Vernon School Board meeting. Okay, the one error in this is that the table on page 17 of the agenda packet, and it says indoor masks at Sohagan, it should say indoor masks as determined at the SAU meeting. And it would be required in orange, optional, so the word optional in orange status would be required. Yellow would be optional, and green would be optional. That's how the vote happened at the SAU level, okay? There's one word that would change. Now, subsequent to that, we have an indoor mask at the two other school board meetings that, that put mask requirement in at, at, not only at status orange, but also at status yellow. Those were their decisions. Okay, so we could, the motion could have been to adopt the whole plan as presented. Okay, but we didn't start that way. We started with a motion to make masks optional in orange. That motion was amended.
No, we started with a plan to make masks optional in yellow.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misstated that. We made, we made it, an emotion, Tim made a motion to make masks required in orange, optional in yellow, which you made an amendment, which you subsequently withdrew, which Tim made an amendment, which subsequently passed. So now, if we, if this, if we don't pass this motion, then this is the only motion that has been made so far. Okay, but I don't think that the discussion has been fruitless, because either way, whether this fails or another motion is made, we're going to decide ultimately, A, whether masks are required at any status level, and B, at what status level that that is going to be implemented. So this is a starting, this is a starting point. But as Steve had indicated, and I have intimated, I mean. But as Steve had indicated, and, and I have intimated, I mean, there are further thinking on this that has, has yet to be, to be tossed out. That's not particularly pertinent for this motion that's currently on the table.
So if I understand you right.
Sure.
Yes, so we're super clear.
Yeah.
If we vote yes right now, then we're saying we want optional green, maybe recommended in yellow. I don't know, we could say, we could play with words. But in, and then it would be required in orange unless you've provided either a parent or doc or medical documentation that you have a real good reason not to wear one. And that would help hopefully keep our school open. Okay, and so if you vote yes, that's what will happen. If you vote no, we do kind of go back to the starting board, but we had had enough discussion to kind of know where we're all thinking. So we don't have to go all the way back to.
That's a fair assessment, yes. We, we have had lots of discussion that has not been fruitless discussion, even if this motion fails. Okay. George, did you, uh, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Yes, so let's call the vote. Laura?
Don't make me first.
Oh, yes, you wanted to not vote first. Okay, we'll go in reverse with her. Uh, Kristi?
Uh, Peters, yes.
George?
George, no.
Stephanie?
Brian, yes?
Question mark?
Keep it there.
Glover, no. Steve?
Yes. Yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
Okay, that motion passes by a vote of five to two. For the sake of our listeners, oh, uh, yes, Steve, please.
You can do your summary, then I want to make a.
No, 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 for the sake of our listeners, I won't summarize the motion yet again. That is, that is now done. Go ahead, Steve.
And I want to make a motion that attempts to, we, we're at a place, I want, I'm going to try and restrict it a bit, see if, if we can have an agreement on more restriction. So I moved it to remove the current exception for parental opt-out in orange status.
Is there a second to that motion? George, second set. Uh, discussion. See, see, we already had the fruits of that discussion.
I think you just called the vote.
Okay, and we'll call the vote. Alan, Tim?
Ronstraw, no.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Glover, yes. Stephanie?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Kristi?
No.
Laura?
No.
Okay, that motion passes by a vote of four to three. So now it's time for a little summary. So where we stand is masks are required indoors, except, or, and a parent's note is not sufficient reason to accept a student from the ma, from the mask requirement.
In orange.
At status orange. Yes. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Steve.
I, I know what you do ahead. I'm, I'm thinking we should just get a stake in the ground on, on where we are on yellow, so.
Yes, yellow is the next obvious place to go because it's, uh, just have a little discussion with any woman next to motion. I mean.
I make a motion that we continue with the motion we just passed to leave masks optional or recommended in yellow indoor use only.
I'll second.
All right, there's the motion on the table. Perfect. What, why have a yellow if there's no, if there's a major level mitigation that you could do? What does yellow even mean? I don't even know. If you don't have masks required at yellow, I don't know what it means. Imagine, here you are, especially at Sohagan because of our vaccination status. We're opening in green and masks are optional. We hope that we're fortunate to avert, avoid a, a situation and some numbers start to go up. What's the easiest thing that we can do in real time? Would to get on the P A system and say, okay, everybody, we're now moving to status yellow, masks on. Everyone knows how to do it. Everyone's done it before. It's not new and it's not scary and it's easy to implement and it requires no further work from administration or anybody else. Then it gives you a little bit of time, I saw you, Tim, hold on a second. Then you have some time to watch the numbers. You're only at status yellow. School's not closed down. You still have orange to go. So what does orange mean? Orange means everything else that you have in the toolbox that you can throw at this thing and try to meet your goal of keeping the schools open. You can try to limit hallway traffic. You can eat your lunches in your classrooms. You can try to leverage your indoor and outdoor spaces. You can try to encourage, you can reintroduce the COVID disclosure form that parents don't like to do in the six o'clock in the morning every day. Okay, you can restrict the use of banned instruments. You can attempt to use some funds to increase your sanitization. There's a plethora of things. Each one of those things requires either funds, mental power, documentation, time away from the task of educating kids to manage the risk, attempt to. So it's a lot of effort to go to orange. And then you're in red and when the whole thing shuts down. So because it's so easy to do, because people are so familiar, because it's such a strong recommendation from our public health agencies at this time. It is, and, and it is one of the littlest ones that we can do. We can't require the vaccinations, has been stated. We can't really do social distancing, has been stated. This is our, our, our one thing that we can do en masse in real time without any other management at all. Gives us some psychological space to then go into a status orange where, oh my goodness, try to keep the, uh, try to keep the system open. So for those reasons, I cannot support the motion as presented. Tim, you had your hand raised first.
Yeah, I'm going to hold off until everybody's had a chance to comment.
Okay, George?
I would, at yellow, support having the option for parental opt-out at yellow. We would require masks at yellow, but they can opt out with a doctor's note or a parental note. Because I still think orange is basically, you know, the last attempt for us to keep the school open. And yellow would also require masks, but still it's not at the orange level. So if there still are kids or parents that are concerned about having the mask on all day and we're at yellow, I'm comfortable with allowing the option for the parents to opt out at yellow. That will get this through.
Yeah.
So then the administration has to figure out when we get to orange, which kids need to put their masks on now? They need to know which exempt kids aren't really exempt? That sounds like a nightmare. I mean, I get the sentiment.
From class to class, it's not like they're sitting in one or two classes, one or two teachers and moving to, you know, all, you know, throughout the week, seven or eight different classes. I just don't think that's, I guess, too hard to manage.
The, the thing is, right, we've had this idea that yellow doesn't mean anything. And I, I respectfully disagree. I think that yellow does indicate something to the community. I think right now we're seeing green, hey, we've held steady. As long as I've been watching it now, the last couple of weeks, we've held steady at eleven, twelve. We spiked to fifteen, we're back down to eleven or twelve. We're not, we're not at any more risk here at Sohagan High School than we are in the grocery store and the shopping mall and the church. Like, so I get green. When you say yellow, you say, ooh, guys, there's a little more in the building, we're at a little more risk. Now we're recommending that you put these masks on. We really hope that whoever can do this will do it. And I think that yellow is a space where we could, we can trust the, the parents and students to make good decisions. There'll be peer pressure either way. So some kids will get peer pressure to wear the mask because their friends will say this is much safer. Some kids may get peer pressure to not wear a mask. I mean, in their whole, your mask protects me, that really was effective. People do, they do believe that. I, I just, I think yellow still does mean something, even if you don't control and mandate and require an action of students against the wishes of their parents.
Okay. Laura, would you like to offer a comment?
Um, I disagree that masks are the only mitigation that you can do. And I think at this age group, students pitch in. We have students that have added a lot to our community over the years from the high school. And I feel that the culture there, if communicated properly, that they'll respond. They want to go to school, they'll clean the desk, they'll give a little more space between them and the person next to them, and they'll be more cautious. I believe that the students at the high school will do the right thing if communicated and that mandates are not necessary.
Any other comments? I have a comment, which I'm happy to, go ahead, Tim.
So everybody brings up, uh, brings up good points. One of the things, thoughts that just occurred to me is one of the things that we try to do here at this high school is prepare our kids to go out into the, into the world, right? And to be ready to tackle whatever it is they want to tackle. This should be one of those things, right? So, uh, optional mask to yellow, if, if they are under, you know, if they have a immunocompromised system or whatever, and they haven't been vaccinated, you know, they'd be pretty stupid not to wear a mask when there's a couple, few cases around, right? But that's their choice. So if they're going to get sick because they're not making the right choices, then, you know, they're, they're not ready to go out into the world. But the, this is the thing, we're trying to raise these kids to a point where they can be, you know, adults going into the world and doing whatever it is they want to do. This is just another one of those learning experiences. So it's, uh, you know, thought just occurred to me, I just wanted to get that out there. That's that.
I, I mean, I, I think you're right. If we were talking about, you know, um, studying hard and, and, and meeting individual goals, you know, but we're talking about a pandemic that we have no real control over with uncertain how it's going to play out. Science is evolving. People have different opinions on it. You know, uh, we, public health agency's guidance has shifted as, as, as information has emerged and that they will continue to shift. And when that guidance changes, then we should change our, our plan accordingly. But that guidance, I mean, al- already at green, we're beyond the guidance. Okay? So, uh, you know, yellow is basically to get square with the guidance. Okay? And it's, it's teaching everybody to, Tim's point, that this is how you responsibly behave as a, as a, as a, in a society that you, you, that everyone has to contribute. And it's not a choice when you're in a pandemic. This isn't like, do you want to participate in the fundraiser? Or, or, or making a choice about whether to attend an athletic event or participate in some, some group thing? Okay, this is far more serious than that. This threatens the ability to us to provide an in-person education experience for every student. Okay, the pandemic is ongoing. Okay? And so what are we going to do to provide a clean, safe and healthy learning environment? And I, I just cannot understand why taking tools off the table and, and not putting, not requiring masks at a status yellow, because it's so easy to do, because everyone is so familiar with it. And because it is a top-level mitigation that's according to current regular, uh, public health agency guidance. I mean, that is for the personal responsibility, I think you're talking about, Tim, is to take that stuff seriously. And we take it seriously, then we model what we want our students to, to do and how they want to, and how they should live in a, in a, in a society in a plurality with differing opinions about science, about guidance, about risks and mismitigation are all over the map. Okay? This is our choice. We have a, a duty to provide this education for all students. The immunocompromised one and the strongest one who's never going to get sick of they in their life. We cannot pick and choose which students are enrolled or not at a private school in that sense. So we, in order to meet our obligations, I do not understand why we would not look back to our duty, to look back at what, where we owe our, 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 what we owe this district as public servants and not as individual citizens of the district. Yes, Stephanie, please.
Okay, so. Such a fall. You know, Tim, the one, you struck a chord with me, a positive one. Because the, you're right, so these color codes partly is a stepping stone, right? We, the green, we're coming in, everyone's feeling good. If something happens in yellow, we're, you know, kids can put their masks on. We start teaching and, and it can be encouraged throughout the school. And we, we kind of teach them those things along the way, right? We, we say, hey, you know what, then maybe the teacher feels more comfortable putting their mask on so they're going to demonstrate their behavior, uh, certain behavior. We can ask this, but I think there is, because we are dealing with high school kids, because we are a high school, that we want our kids to learn as they go, to learn from doing and demonstrating that I think we got to give them a chance. And I think that's where I cross the yellow. And then orange is like, okay, I'm, I'm taking that, that opportunity away. Now we're, now we need to make that step and do something different. Curious, what's your feedback after your announcement?
Well, happy to, happy to weigh in. So, uh, it's been interesting, these last several meetings over the last couple of weeks because there's been a pretty intense debate on both sides. And both sides have valid points. We're largely ending up where our task force started us, which was, after all these meetings, it's really kind of circling back to where the task force started us. The one difference right now from that entire plan is we've made some tweaks to metrics, but largely the, the fundamental difference is that masks are optional at Sohagan in status yellow. I can live with that. And the reason why is as, as superintendent, I'll use a metaphor, that's not a perfect metaphor, but on a snowy Wednesday morning in January, I feel a certain responsibility to keep our kids safe that other people probably don't feel. And I make people upset with whatever decision I choose for a snowy Wednesday morning. I can live with that because in my opinion, the, the short-term annoyance that people have for a snow day is no match for what the long-term grief would be for me if I felt personally responsible as superintendent for a child, a teacher, a staff member being hurt. The difference here in this situation is the responsibility I feel most acutely right now is for those who are under twelve years of age, because their parents don't have the choice that parents with children over the age of twelve have right now. And so on balance, all things being equal, I'm very comfortable with parents making a decision for their child once they've had the opportunity to vaccinate their child. It's not perfect, and I know people might even disagree with that sentiment, but I feel a particular responsibility for those kids who are younger than age twelve. And that's, that's the reason why, because those parents don't have the same choice. At Sohagan High School, our parents have had the option to vaccinate their children. That has proven to be largely successful at mitigating any risk associated with COVID-19. State of New Hampshire released data this morning. From January twentieth onward, I believe it's ninety-four point nine percent of the people who've been hospitalized for COVID-19 have been unvaccinated. Ninety-four point nine percent. I forget the number for the death rate, but I believe it's higher than that number. I believe it's ninety-six or ninety-seven percent. I don't remember offhand. Of the people who've died since January twentieth have been unvaccinated. So to me, parental choice for those who've had the option to vaccinate their children is a responsibility of the parents that I no longer feel as a school system, we bear that responsibility. And for that reason, that's why I recommended, the task force recommended, that Sohagan would not only start in a different status level than the other schools, which never recommended or never required masks in status green. That's why I'm also comfortable in status yellow, having masks optional. And frankly, I think our school system has earned enough credibility in our town that if I asked our community, please wear masks in status yellow at Sohagan High School, but they are not required, I'm willing to bet that most of our students would respect that and would make that choice if they possibly could. So for that reason, after all of this debate, I'm comfortable changing the recommendation I, I originally made to remove the requirement in status yellow and leave it optional even in status yellow. Thank you, Stephanie, for asking.
Tim?
Can we call the vote?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to just say in response to Adam, that the reason why Sohegan is able to go into green is precisely what you said, because of the availability of the vaccine. And I'm so happy that we have that. Don't get me wrong. It is amazing. Truly amazing. It's the only thing why the other schools are not in green. Now, I have, there was a time when I had a kid in the high school, a kid in the AMS, and a kid at Clark Wilkins, okay? I wake up in the morning and I see yellow. Whoa, now I got to think. What am I, what does that mean? Oh, yeah, right, because that one's still optional, but we're like responding to your plea. Or maybe I don't believe in masks. So, I'd say, honey, you don't, you don't wear the mask. Okay, you do, you do, because that's my right. Maybe that's the decision that I make. I don't know. Just saying. That's the choice now. It just seems very confusing, number one. Number two, and we have a green, we have a mass optional standpoint. Number two, the only thing left on the mitigations for yellow is all parent meetings that can be done remotely will be done remotely. That's it. That's it. So, great. Numbers are rising, and what we're going to do is we're going to kick the parents out of the, into remote meetings, as opposed to inviting them to in-person meetings wearing masks. I just, I don't understand. Then, we're going to end up at some high metric level, maybe the carts out of the station, we're going to give you an orange. My fear is, we lose our goal, and we end up shutting the system down more than we keep it open. So, that's what I wanted to say in closing.
John?
Yes, Laura?
I want to say that we're a dynamic school board. We're no longer in a state of emergency for New Hampshire, and we can meet at any time. If numbers go crazy, we can call a meeting. You know, we don't have to decide tonight for the entire school year. I mean, it's nice. It would be nice to have consistency and structure, but if things get crazy like you're referring to, we have other options. We can call a meeting. We can have a discussion. And furthermore, I think high school students are capable and should be encouraged to manage themselves. And I don't need to be looking up their status of what color it is for the day.
Thank you, Laura. Anybody, any final comments before we call the vote? Seeing none? Yes?
You're going to repeat the motion now? What's on the table?
The motion on the table is to, the motion on the table is to make mask optional at status yellow. Period.
Okay. Oh, because I need it. I just forgot. It's been so long.
I will update it to say something like requested or encouraged.
Strongly encouraged. Actively strongly encouraged to the greatest extent allowed by policy?
I'll even let you
Okay. Right. Okay. Kristi?
I vote yes to leave masks some form of optional in yellow.
George? Stephanie?
Ron, yes.
Glover, no. Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
And George? Okay, that motion passes six to one. Go ahead.
I will say, Adam is a great salesman. And here's why, because, and I met briefly with Adam at the Mount Vernon Village School meeting, and I will say, you know, I have a four-year-old daughter, going to turn five, has no ability to get vaccinated, has had issues in the past. I was not leaving there until some way or shape or form there was going to be masks at that level, obviously. After listening to Adam now, you know, the majority of the kids, if not all the kids, have the availability of vaccines. So, I think that's the one factor, I think, that I didn't really think through completely. So, as long as we have masks in at orange, I'm okay with it. Yellow, recommended, however he wants to word it, I'm okay with the way it is. Thank you.
All right. As far as I could tell, that was pretty much the most contentious matter of the school safety plan. There are other things in there that are worthy of discussion. For example, what is Sohegan Cooperative School Board wants to, if anything, direct the superintendent to do about ESER funds that are available for this district? The only, the only use of those funds presented in the safety plan is to, for remote student support via the V-Lax and an interventionist, and which, you know, may be of limited value at the high school level. So, any board members have any ideas or discussion points or suggestions about how we direct the superintendent to discuss with us about the ESER monies that are available to us for COVID prevention?
Do you have ideas already, Adam?
I do. Thank you, Ms. Peters. So, we do have some students that have already signed up for the V-Lax modality, and so we will certainly want to support those students. And then I would suggest we hold off a bit on committing all of the funds. They don't have to be spent even this current school year. And I think it's possible we're going to identify needs as the school year unfolds with kids who've come back into our building that have been out for 18 months, with students that were in our building but were in and out of remote last year that have additional needs. And so, I don't have any strong needs that are identified yet. And so, because this is house money, so to speak, I'd like to save it for what we really need to spend it on, once we identify what that is. And so, I'll look at my team to see if there's anything else that I've not thought of. You guys good?
So, can I ask just a question about, you have, I assume already chosen the person to do the coordination for the V-Lax. How many students do you feel like that person can handle before we would need to consider a second person?
Yeah, so, we thought the number, if I remember right, Steve, of the number of people that that one interventions can support is 40 to 60? Is that what we had?
Yeah, and Mike and I have begun the discussion.
So, and right now, SAU-wide, we have about a dozen.
Okay.
So, I think we're very well supported. And don't forget, that interventionist position is also identified beyond just the remote students, but also to help with intervention in our schools, primarily at the elementary and middle school, because of the supports that already exist at the high school. And again, the use of that interventionist will be a portion based on their actual time. So, Sohegan isn't paying a third, or, you know, it's broken down. So, for now, my suggestion would be that we commit to that interventionist portion of that role, and then wait to see what other needs are identified. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Steph.
I have a question about the interventionist. Because we have, we have coaches and we have domain leaders. I know domain leaders are mostly focused on teachers or on the students, but we have coaches also extra this year. Can we utilize them instead of paying extra for interventionists?
Yeah, I think as Steve Chamberlain hinted at, I think we're going to find that the interventionist needs to do less at Sohegan than it does at the other schools because of the support we already have in place. And I haven't seen that plan yet. I trust Steve and Mike to be working on that. But I, at the end of the day, when we account for the time spent by the interventionists at Sohegan, I doubt it's a significant amount of time because of the resources we already have.
I have another question. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask it, but if you have students who test positive and need to be out for 10 to 14 days, do you guys have a plan in place to keep them up, since we don't have a remote option?
Indeed. So, we at our, at Sohegan in particular, we've gotten fairly adept at using Google Classroom and keeping track and keeping students engaged. So, those students will be able to follow along if they're well enough to do that. I mean, some kids might actually be sick and fairly ill while at home, right? But if they're able and they're well enough, they'll be able to do that. We're not going to be zooming into classes like we did last year. We're not going to ask out of our faculty anymore. We were lucky that they held on as long as they did last year, quite frankly, with that dual modality situation. So, we will support those students, but it's not uncommon. Before COVID, we've had kids out for 10 days, two weeks, et cetera, with the flu or other ailments, or even with injuries. Sometimes kids get in a, break a leg in soccer and have to be out for a couple of weeks. And so, we're pretty good at supporting them in that situation, and we'll do that again this year.
Laura, do you have a comment about ESER funds?
I would like to see the ESER funds not be spent on the interventionist for the high school, because we already, I believe, manage like 50 V-Lax classes. We, the high school uses V-Lax as supplemental instruction for classes that aren't available. And it helps expand what we can offer. And I'm, that's it.
Okay. Adam, is it, is it a true statement that the SAU would hire an interventionist as presented in the plan, that the individual districts will be billed for that interventionist's time based on the needs of the individual districts? So, to Laura's point and to others' points, if there was little to no interventionist need at the high school, then there would be no bill against the high school's ESER funding?
Correct. And I do think that is a likely scenario, that there would be no even use at all of the interventionists, but I would still want to reserve that capability, should it be needed, and be in the best interest of even a couple of students.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Any other comments on the use of ESER funds? Seeing none. Moving on, there's at least one, maybe two bits of the, there's another bit in the school plan, which is the factors affecting status level. There have been some shifts and movement in those percentages and case counts and so on. At the SAU meeting, well, there was, let's just remind ourselves, there was what was presented by the task force and the superintendent's recommendations. Some of that got changed at the SAU meeting last Thursday. Some of that either did or didn't get changed at the Amherst School Board, the Mount Vernon School Board meetings on Monday and Tuesday of this week. What I'm looking at here in the agenda packet is not accumulation of those changes. And I know it. I don't, I don't know what all those changes are, but this active case count by town is not by 100,000. I think these metrics got changed. So, I guess the question, the bigger question for discussion is, are there anything in the current metrics table? Or, you know, or what other districts have done that we need to do differently, or attest that we want to do it the same as, or do we need any discussion about anything with respect to metrics? Adam, yes, please?
Thank you. Included in your packet, starting on page 17, is the updated, the updated plan after the Mount Vernon School Board meeting, after the Amherst School Board meeting this week, and subject to your changes this evening. The one substantive change to the factors affecting status level on page 19 in your packet is the rate of active cases per 100,000 were way too low. And I think, actually, I want to thank Ms. Grun for pointing that out to me. So, those numbers have been increased significantly. The, on our website, we've updated our dashboard on our website, which already reflects the active data, reflects the color status. So, you can see that the active cases per 100,000 right now, in Amherst, that number is 137. In Sohegan, and it's properly weighted for the Mount Vernon and Amherst populations, when you combine the two, it's 112 per 100,000, which are both very low numbers. There's, as of tonight, there were 16 active cases in Amherst and none in Mount Vernon. So, so that's the one substantive change. Left as is, we would have been at that one metric, probably at orange or red with very few cases, which didn't make sense. So, it's still, I believe, makes sense to have it based on the active cases per 100,000 population, because that evenly weights it for the Mount Vernon population being much smaller than the Amherst population, but that's the only, the only change that exists. And again, our website shows the active data that will be updated every day, and it's updated as of this evening.
Okay, apologies for citing the wrong table. It was on a different page. So, does anybody have any comments or anything to discuss with respect to the metrics tables as presented on page 19 in the agenda packet?
Most accept them. Will we do that?
Absolutely.
I'll second.
Laura, do you have a comment on the metrics table on page 19 of the agenda packet?
My comment is, I would have liked to have seen the, if the table is based on risk and risk balance, I would have liked to have seen the age of the student body to be, and their risk for COVID. I would like to have seen death rates. I would like to have seen hospitalizations. But, you know, it's not in there, and I'm willing to compromise for what it is, but those are my comments.
Thanks, Laura. Adam, is it, this is my understanding, so I want to confirm for the record, that these factors, as you presented them, are in a priority of these descending priorities. So, school cases is, start seeing school cases go up, okay, that's the scariest, quote-unquote, that's the most important. Second most important, vaccination availability. Third most important, rate of active cases per 100,000. Fourth most important, test positivity rate at public health region. And fifth most important, vaccination rate by town. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. And is it also a true statement that it requires judgment to evaluate these factors and weigh them differently depending on the circumstances of the day? So, it, no, so it's, both of the following statements are true. Not any one factor is determinative, and any one factor can be determinative. That's true, that both of those statements are true. Let me restate them one at a time.
I think both of those statements are true. It's possible that we have 100 cases in Sohegan High School and 101 cases in the town of Amherst. That's possible, right? That is possible, in which case, we would be in the red status, as I read those metrics.
Or it might be that the school cases go up, and we know about them so soon that we don't actually see them yet in our active races per town, or because we know before it's disclosed otherwise.
That's true.
Any one metric could govern the day, right? Okay. So, I mean, yeah.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, please.
So, I actually think, I would like to support Ms. Taylor's comment, and that I will, the way the state reports hospital bed uses, they do three metrics, and they have, what's strange is, New Hampshire reports, there's public health regions, there's areas of our state, and then they have hospital corridors or hospital, it's like the I-93 hospital corridor group goes all the way up, I think, looking at this, like past, almost to the notch. It's a remarkable shape, and that's the only hospital availability metric that we have available to us, but it has three metrics there. Percentage of staffed adult ICU beds available, which is currently 10.3%, percent of staffed hospital beds available, which is currently 13.4%, and percentage of ventilators available, which is 68.1%. So, to me, as I look at that, those are bad numbers. There's only 10% of our ICU beds are available. So, I'm not sure that that data matches what I think we know anecdotally. So, I want to add this statistic in to respect Ms. Taylor's point of view, and so I will work on adding that with time, once I understand how the state reports it, and to see if I can get something that's a little more appropriate to our region. So, if you guys can So if you guys can trust me to do that, I will work on narrowing that down. Because I research it quite a bit and I just struggle with how the state reports it. That's really my issue.
Would you be willing to come back then next month with whatever you might have found?
Update, sure, happy to.
I meant the number of 12 to 19-year-olds or something, or, you know, whatever. Did they publish anything that says how many people in our age group are actually in the hospital?
I don't believe that they do. I've looked for that, and I, the hospital statistics, right now, they say there are 122 confirmed COVID-19 hospitalizations. And then there's another 18 that are suspect COVID-19 hospitalizations, and they don't break it down any further. I'm sure because of concerns about privacy.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody have anything else to say about the school safety plan? Yes, Steve?
Do you want to vote to adopt it as amended?
Sure.
We had a motion to adopt the metrics, but we could defer that to adopting the whole thing, including the metrics. I understand it's just the things we've already talked about in the metrics would be included. Doesn't sound like anyone has any real big problems with the metrics, so.
Right, so was that motion seconded earlier? It was?
Yeah, I seconded it. We want to just withdraw that and then just? Yeah, we'll withdraw it and we'll vote to accept the plan as amended tonight.
I like that. Second on. A little second again. Call a roll, Laura?
I wanted to verify that each school would be looked at differently for the color codes.
They are, yes. In fact, South Heagan is different than the other three schools as of right now.
Okay, thank you. Taylor, yes?
Pam?
Bronsberry, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Glover, yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Peters, yes.
Okay, good. I did. I voted yes. Last thing on this whole thing, there's an emergency policy that is out of, woefully out of date because it references governor, governor orders that are no longer in effect. So I think it is prudent for us to update that policy. Normal procedure as we bump along through policy work is for policy revisions to first go through our SAU-level policy committee, which comprises two members of each school board. That committee processes, delivers a recommendation to the larger SAU board where it is noodled, potentially in disgust, and then it flows down to the constituent school boards. Yes, Stephanie?
Does this need to go through policy committee first? And we need to, well, then pass it through the SAU? And then?
Right. Well, you're, yeah, that's where I was going with this. So in our packet is the current policy and a draft policy that I had, that I wrote. So I guess the question is, that I want to ask our board in the first instance is whether we should instruct the S, the larger policy that the SAU school board supports and a revision to the existing policy was, is quite clearly out of date in the first instance. And because I'm on that policy, I would submit this draft as a starting point for the discussion. Okay, but that makes sense to folks.
Yeah, if it's out of date, it should be looked at through the policy committee and have their suggestion.
Okay. So just to make it clear, I'd like to make that motion that we, that we recommend, that the school board recommends to the SAU policy committee to update and revise the existing emergency, emergency policy on personal protective measures policy. Anybody second the motion? Yes?
Second the motion and then ask a question.
Okay, for the discussion.
So we passed the original emergency policy because it was an emergency. And so we did it really fast, we hired a lawyer to write it for us, blah, blah, blah. The question, the question is, so I can look at you and talk to you. The question, the question is, Mr. Superintendent, does this, does John's draft give you something you desperately need? Or could you wait for the slow gears of the policy committee to grind?
So the, the current policy is a year or so old. However, it has, it does reference the governor's emergency and executive orders, but it says that the policy doesn't expire until the governor withdraws his emergency orders or the school board withdraws the policy, whichever is later. So it's still in effect and it's still fine. There's nothing in the policy that I think is urgent and needs to be changed. And so I'm comfortable if the policy committee wants to take a look at it in due, in due course. But I've drafted a plan that you guys have adopted that gives me all the guidance I need to open school on Tuesday. So I'm not sure that anything that needs to be done with the policy will change how school will open, and therefore I don't feel any urgency to change the policy soon.
Can I ask another question? Do, Adam, sorry. Do you still need an emergency policy with the other policy in place? Like, is there something?
Yeah, I think I do. The, the policy itself gives me the authority that I don't typically have, which would be to say, school's closed, we're going to status red, right? That's assumed in the memo I wrote that kind of references the powers that were granted to me by that policy. So I still think so. I think that if the board felt as if they didn't want me to have that authority to make those decisions, we could have many more board meetings like this one to hash those decisions out. But I think for now, it probably makes sense to keep it, in my opinion.
Well, I don't want to meet when we're in status red, so I see your point.
However, we should note that just because we shut our school buildings down doesn't not mean that we can meet remotely for school board meetings. One of the effects of not having a governor's emergency order and down pushing the authority on the school boards. We can control what the schools do, but we can't control what we do ourselves. I just find that a little ironic.
So maybe not right now, but maybe you want to address that after we vote on the motion of how we got the power to do that, how it expired and those things. Oh, perfect.
Yeah, so the governor, one of the governor's emergency orders specifically changed the requirements of RSA 91A for meetings to be held in public. And so as a result, we were able to do those over Zoom or whatever remote modality. When the governor's emergency orders expired and were not, were not extended, that capability went away. There still is an exception in the statutes that allows for a remote meeting, and that is for when an emergency board meeting is called, which is atypical. I also believe, and some other people in the peanut gallery might confirm this, there was a statute that was, that was addressed by the legislature. It was tabled, and I believe there's a study committee to look at this, to perhaps change RSA 91A to enable boards to use Zoom as a meeting modality or any other remote thing. But it's, it's not in our, we don't have that capability yet, but perhaps there will be something in the next legislative session that enables that.
Sorry, thank you.
Any further discussion? I have a comment to make, but I said something already. Stephanie, was that your hand?
The motion is that we would send this to the policy committee review.
That we would send the existing policy committee, along with a draft discussion, to the, the task for that committee would be to, you know, at a minimum revise and make current the policy. So it doesn't, it references the current state of affairs. You know, the current, the existing one, for example, references six feet of social distancing as guidance. Well, that's not quite the current guidance yet. I think it's important not to let the full gears of the policy committee grind away because the next time that policy committee meets is going to be next summer, okay? Not the time between now and then, it's, we have one meeting, one final meeting. So that's the limitation of the policy season. It's not very reactive to real-time events like ever-evolving guidance and science and conditions with respect to an ongoing pandemic. I think it's important that power policy reflect current state of affairs. I think it's good modeling for our students that we don't let something fester that could be, could be, would reflect the current situation, would reflect the current findings and principles that the school boards believe in. That gives the superintendent power to, a direction to present us with the school plan and, and all this whole process that we've gone through now becomes reflected in our policy. I think that's good governance. So that's the basis for my motion. Any other discussion? Laura, do you have anything to say on the matter?
I was pulled out by a family emergency this week, and I really haven't had an opportunity to give it time, sorry.
Okay. Do you understand what the motion is currently on the table?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, are you prepared to vote on that motion?
I was going to abstain.
Yes, okay. Would you like a recap of the, of the situation? Or did I hear you'd say that you were just going to abstain?
I'm going to abstain. You're just voting to the policy you drafted, you want to send to the policy committee for them to take a look at it to update the emergency policy that's out of date because we're no longer in an emergency. And I, I can see the benefit of rescinding the original emergency policy if it has requirements in it that aren't up to date and are not required by our students right now, like six feet separation. I don't like having policies that, that aren't up to date like that.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like Laura and I are getting to the same place through different mental processes. Yes, Steve?
I'll just say, the, I expect the chair of policy to be able to call a meeting shortly after the next SAU meeting. There are about five policies hanging fire in some way, shape, or form, so there's, there's work to be done. If something, finish the fire that sort of hangs the fire, and we have a new one to work on, I'm sure she wouldn't say, wait till May. We'll get done faster than that.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, let's call the roll. Laura?
Taylor abstained.
Abstained. Pam?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Glover, yes. Stephanie?
Grun, yes.
George?
George, yes.
And Kristi?
Peters, yes.
Okay, that passes 6 to 0 with one abstention. Okay. It only took two hours to get a school safety plan at South Heagan. It's pretty efficient, I'd say. All right, where are we? Consent agenda. Ooh, yes. Maybe I kept my computer, can't deal with the paper anymore. Okay, as per, as per usual, we would take a motion to accept the consent agenda. Is anyone willing to make that motion? Steve?
I'll second.
And Pam seconds. Yes, Stephanie, for entering our discussion.
Yes, we've got, I don't know if we want to do handbook as a separate thing, but I've got quite a few questions and.
Okay, all right, so that's number 10. We'll call it pulled for further discussion out of the consent agreement, consent agenda.
Can I make a suggestion? Perhaps we, given that there's concerns and questions, perhaps we table it for the next meeting? Can we resolve them all in this meeting, do you think? Would it make sense to gather those?
It might be smart to do it now.
Okay, so might I suggest we pull the student handbook from the consent agenda completely, not vote on it this evening, and ask any board members with comments, questions, concerns to email myself. Email me and we'll, we'll address them for next month? Is that okay with you, Mike?
Anybody object on the school board object to that plan? Laura? Hearing none?
Actually, I do have one question on that, though. We have people registering for school right now, and they're signing saying that they agreed to the handbook. I think the link goes to the old handbook, that's in Power School, so that's probably okay since this hasn't been approved, but I just want to be clear.
Yeah, if you can get your updates or questions or comments to us soon, we will actually update that very fairly quickly, and we will publish what the new one will look like. The handbook is a recitation of existing policies, so policies will govern, right? It's just what we put into a handbook is somewhat subjective. So please get those to us quickly, and then we'll assume, assume next month, assuming we don't have any issues, that we can get that passed fairly quickly at the board. Thank you.
Any other discussion items in the consent agenda? That for Kristi, she's away. Laura, do you have any other discussion points for the consent agenda? Laura is not on the line, okay. Thanks for checking.
No need for roll call votes in the, temporarily, so you can call a voice.
Okay. The question on the table is, or to fill you in, the consent agenda, item number 10, the SHS student handbook, we pulled it from the agenda and pulled, not, from the consent agenda as well as the discussion tonight to give the opportunity for some feedback on this from us to Adam to consort it out, and we'll have, we'll have a proper discussion on that at their next meeting, okay? So call, the question is, right now, is there any other discussion items in the remaining consent agenda, agenda, one through nine?
I just had one addition to the, or change to the draft minutes from June 14th. This isn't very long. I think it's line 398. Just keep scrolling. Yeah, where it says Ms. Peters gave her experience with this topic, I would like that to reflect that I, my concern is that we have a significant portion of students below the legal age of consent. That's what I would like to be remembered for in years to come.
Any objections? Hearing none. Danae, can you help us? Thank you. Any other discussion points on the consent agenda?
John?
Oh, Laura, hello. Glad you made it back. Yes.
It was, it was brought, it was brought to my attention and suggested that the consent agenda is too fat and it's not necessarily appropriate for us to approve the consent agenda the way we are. The minutes need approval. Many of the items in there just need acknowledgement that we saw them, but it would be inappropriate to approve them. So I suggest that we spend more time considering what should be approved and what should be, we saw this in the agenda, like we acknowledge receipt of this report.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think that's the direction we would all want to go in. I know that there's nine items in here, it looks like a lot. Two treasurer's report, facilities update, couple of memos regarding lease agreement and a, or new procedures or a new program for my school bucks and some things which fit that bill, or they might fit that bill. I mean, it's tricky, I think, Laura, to anticipate what might require extensive discussion and what might be more an acknowledgement of receipt and like, okay, and you read it, and it's like, okay, it's informational. There's not a lot of discussion. Yes, Steve, go ahead.
To elaborate on Laura's point, some things we are acting on, improving minutes, as she said. Other things are, we are receiving information and we have a separate section in reports, for example. for example. We don't have to vote on them, we just get them. That way, people aren't confused about, well, geez, Seville does one of the reports that I think is under the wrong, but I have to vote for it anyway. Geez, what's wrong with this organization? I'm just looking forward to your.
Probable, probable, yeah, it's a probable. Who's talking about this? So if I'm hearing right, you would suggest that in our agendas, we have a section that just says reports received, and then another section, the consent agenda, that things that you're approving by that motion.
Right.
Yeah, this this is modeled actually off of how our legislature handles bills. It's the beginning of a legislative session in the House, for example, there's a consent calendar where they approve 30, 40 bills sometimes without any discussion at all, because they're trying to make sure that their already long sessions don't go even longer. So things that don't require discussion shouldn't be an agenda item. That's what this is modeled after, but we can certainly break that apart into two sections.
Well, and yes, Laura, go ahead.
My point was that, like, we can discuss anything. I'm not saying we should separate what we discuss, I'm saying we should define what is being approved and voted on by the board. Minutes approved, that gets voted on by the board. The principals' report should not be voted on by the board. We can vote that we received it. The fact that we vote for it means something. And this was actually suggested to me by someone very knowledgeable. So I
Okay, duly noted, Laura.
I have one correction to the minutes.
Go ahead.
I was at the last meeting, it was not on the agenda to vote for the nomination, and you voted for five nominations without it being on the consent agenda. I'm not going to challenge that, I don't think it would change the vote if we revoked it, but I do want to note that on line 167, it says the voting was unanimous. At that point, I was not on the call. So if you could just say unanimous, either Mrs. Taylor was not connected, because I was having connection issues for the last meeting, or you could just say six to zero. However, you want to correct that.
Okay, yeah, that sounds reasonable. No objection, I presume. Yeah, Danae can make that happen. Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion items on the current agenda, the remaining nine items, one through nine? Seeing none. Since Laura's back, we'll call the roll. There's a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of the pulling out the student handbook. Laura?
Taylor, yes.
And the amendment minutes. Thank you, Steve. We'll come back to Laura. Pam?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Glover, yes. Stephanie?
Run, yes.
George?
George, yes.
Peters, yes.
And Laura?
Taylor, yes.
Okay. Hang on. Everybody still got good energy? We weren't really sure how long this meeting was going to go because of the hot topic of the school reopening plan, so there was a view that at some point it went on too terribly long, that we could table some things, but we're only a little past eight. It's not unusual for a meeting to go longer than two hours as scheduled, I'd say, so I recommend we move forward on the next agenda item. Yeah? Okay, here we go. Next agenda item is Mr. Mike Berry's principal's report. Hello, Mike, welcome. Is there anything you want to, yeah, go ahead and make a statement, otherwise.
How we doing, everybody? So, evening. Before I get into the principal's report, I'd like to bring up the dean of faculty and the dean of students. I just wanted to introduce them to you and kind of talk a little bit about this report and their role in it and what they do at the school. My hope is that they don't have to come to too many board meetings, but we have Dana Curran, the dean of faculty, with us, and John Berry, the dean of students, with us this evening. And as we built this report, we reorganized it in a manner that we think is more user friendly and a little bit more clear. And so we kind of went into like the strategic vision and building priorities, and we attached, you know, our building priorities to the vision of the district. Then we kind of have the facilities and finance and operations section, and then it goes through various people in what in departments and what they do with the dean of faculty, dean of students, the counseling office, the student service office, into athletics, in the calendar of events. So I hope that organization is something that you guys find appealing and are interested in that. Last year, if you could recall, I tried four different board report styles, and they didn't seem to land, you know, across the whole group. So I, John, if there is some feedback on this, you know, we will take it and kind of get into it. And but this also, the board report also includes when we do receive questions or concerns or directives from Adam or Steve to play, hey, maybe you should touch upon this in your board report. So it's a it's an effort to make sure that we are communicating what we think we need to communicate out from from South Hegan based on the work that's happening, but also as a direct reflection of what's being asked of us, whether it's by the board or the superintendents to highlight during these things. But at the end of the day, I think it does encompass the work that that has happened since June and the direction of the school, and I'm really confident in in the information in this in this report as it's outlined.
Thanks, Mike. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Appreciate that.
Guys, have any thoughts or questions?
Any questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead, Stephanie.
My first question, Saber Flex period. So are the students going to an actual classroom as a teacher?
At the ninth and 10th grade level, yes.
And are they're being graded on just work-study practices, or because it says they'll be, it says they'll be, yeah, assessed as engaged learners?
We'll report out on the the work-study practices as fall under the portrait of a graduate, just so we put Saber Flex in at the ninth and 10th grade level for really the the benefit of the students as they're returning back from the disrupted, you know, 18 months that they've had, and we wanted to have more eyes on them in a more bit of a structured manner. Overall, you'll see a theme that, you know, for us at South Hegan, we're recommitting to the South Hegan Six. We're recommitting to the mission, we're leaning into being at school. We have some concerns about the students assimilating to a five-day week, and some of them have not done that, and being in person. So we thought having a space, especially for the ninth and 10th graders for the 21, 22 school year, where they had an adult in their room that kind of was there to work with them as they navigated this transition back. And it's similar to the ninth-grade academic supports that they have, it's similar to advisory on the academic days, but it's it's just it's a period that we're not going to allow the ninth and 10th graders to to kind of have a free period that is unstructured at this moment in time. And so the 11th and 12th graders will still have still have their their free periods and be able to use the school and the space as they see needed, but at the ninth and 10th grade level, we thought a little bit otherwise.
I like the idea. Thanks for the explanation. What if a kid can't fill the whole period with work or homework, or what's going to happen? Because how work comes and goes?
So they'll figure out kind of how to use it, you know, and there are some options for for students who need to, there's some flexibility in it, right? Hence in the name of how we want to use that, and we'll read the the situation. We're able to pivot and be a little bit nimble, you know, at South Hegan anyway, and this is another manner that we can be a bit flexible in how we use that, and there's some processes and how we determine that. You know, you talk to a lot of teenagers that they don't really have much to do if you ask them, right? You know, and like, hey, I got it, right? But there is stuff to do. And so, you know, we want to just make sure that we're in the environment, putting them in an environment that we can, you know, have some honest conversations with them, why they grapple with the use of time and why they transition back into to the year. Do you even want to add if I kind of forgot anything? You got to hit, it has to be on green, though. No?
No, I think Mike encapsulated it really well. It's going to be exciting for us to see how maybe some of the sophomores might want to use that time to do some of the Division One work now that we're really leaning into the Portrait of a Graduate indicators. We really want them to be leaders of their learning and take ownership of that. That might be a real exciting time for them to use to be able to do that.
How how many students per class, or student-teacher ratio, I guess?
Yeah, there's a range, you know, likely between, you know, nine and 17 is probably the range that we find ourselves in. There could be some outliers, you know, as you kind of schedule this for all ninth and 10th grade students.
And is is that, was there effort placed or effort put into the distribution of the students in terms of trying to get a like a proper heterogeneous mix? Or was it just a?
It was based on what availability they had during their class. Obviously, the classes that they are required to take and wanted to take were their, how their schedule was built, and when their open period became available, that became there.
Reflects that. Right. Okay, I just, you know. Was it considered who was in each class, or was it just like, okay, here's the pool that we have for first period, so?
I think we
Random selections, and here it is.
Teachers with grade levels.
At the first instance, yeah. Okay. Cool. Thanks. Go ahead, Kristi.
I don't know the answer to that question right now. I'll have to.
He paid for like all the other kids in this.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll look into that. That's such a thing.
And feel free to send those kind of questions my way as well when you get them. Happy to answer those parents.
Yeah, it all happened today, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, though.
Yeah, go ahead.
Portrait of a graduate. What competencies are you mapping to Portrait of Graduate, and why are we mapping competence? So it's not competencies as standards and stuff.
In what sense?
Well, it says in here Portrait of Graduate, departments are working this summer to map current competencies to Portrait of Graduate indicators.
Yeah, that's through, yeah, that's through our transition from Empower to Power Teacher Pro. Want to speak to that a little bit, Dan?
Sure, yeah. So teachers, we used to have A L Es, forgive me, because I'm like two months into the job, right? So we used to have A L Es, and teachers were really excited about having a common language that all students could use to talk about themselves as learners. And we were trying to find ways to bring that back into common usage, because they're still in a lot of our rubrics and proficiency skills, some of the some of that language. And so when we took a look at the Portrait of a Graduate, it was it was an easy fit. It was like, yes, this is, you know, A L E two-point-o. So everyone really wanted to rally around that as a way for us to be able to talk about our students as learners from K to 12, because it's the tide that binds everybody. So what we asked folks to do is to take a look at their existing standards and competencies, and we're in what buckets were those things falling, right? So if we're saying this is our expectation in math, is that they can graph this function and explain it, would that feed into something about critical thinking? Would that feed into something about being an effective communicator? Would that feed into something about, forgive me, that I don't have the six of them in front of me, right? Global responsible citizen, where would it go? And we found that that was really easy for folks to do because they had already built things with those A L Es, Portrait of a Graduate competencies in mind. So it's really just a matter, it's really just a tool for us to be able to communicate with students, with parents, and then students to be able to talk about themselves in terms of those indicators.
Okay, so the A L Es are kind of, it's like coming back, because I know they haven't been discussed in a while.
Exactly.
So I have a junior, and it's like when she had to do her Division One, it's like, what's an A L E?
Exactly.
And she annoyed, and then I'm like, oh, yeah, then there's the work-study practice, and then there's, and then there's, so I mean, I think it's getting a lot.
Yes. So that, so so this is to speak exactly to that, right? So these are these these Portrait of a Graduate indicators are going to be front and center. So when you get to your your Division One, we get to your senior project, we get to the J L P, you you know what it is, and it's very clear. You're not having to think back, when I did this in my science class, did that make me an effective communicator? It's going to be very clear.
Stephanie, I think you'll see that's an example of us trying to narrow the energies, make it a bit more concise, make it a bit more clear and easily, like travels with the students, travels with the family, you know, so they know they're getting the same type of experience in ninth and 10th and 11th, 12th grade. And so that's an example of that work that you see, you'll see throughout the school year and in this document.
John?
Go ahead, Laura.
Mike, welcome to the new school year. I hope you were able to rest some over the summer. Overall, I'm really pleased with the update in the handbook, and I'm really pleased with the principal report. So everything I say is meant to be more constructive criticism that maybe should make it better. It's not intended anything less. I think you have done a great job, and it's really nice having a committed principal in your role. That being said, I was a little concerned that the staff steering committee, you indicated that Senate, the faculty senate formed, they voted to table it, and yet it was so important, you like formed it anyway, the staff steering committee. I want to know, why is the board? If something is such a crisis that you have to form it anyway to move forward, why is the board not part of that process?
So, any building that you're in, you want to collaborate with your teachers. South Hegan, collaboration in teacher voice has been a foundation of South Hegan since it existed, and they're very much a democratic school. So during the end of last year, I think I updated the board a couple times, that we were trying to form the PPC and the faculty senate, we're going through a process to form a steering committee and kind of consolidate groups, so we didn't have to meet with instructional coaches, ninth-grade team coordinators, you know, and have a bunch of groups that are kind of like decision-making groups. So what we wanted to do is kind of put that into one representative group that partners with administration to, you know, help guide the decisions, you know, throughout South Hegan, as we partner with community council, because they kind of work simultaneously together. And when that didn't happen, we needed that group because we did not want to not have a teacher representative group to partner with us to help us move the building forward. So it was tabled on June 18th by by the this, the entire staff, actually, by one person and voted on at a staff meeting, but we needed to do that, and we were in a position that we could put that together. So we went through a process with the teachers, they were very much part of this, and they ended up working with us, they elected people, and now we have a steering committee that is representative, that people are at comfortable with, and now we can partner with our teachers and partner with the community council as a steering committee to to navigate the school year. And I thought it was really important that we had one.
I'm not questioning the creation, I'm questioning why there aren't more board updates. If if things are in such a state that you have to create these committees, even though the faculty senate voted to table it, I just would like an update. You know, I think it's important as a board that, you know, we have teachers that work really hard at the high school, and I want to make sure that they're happy and that things are going well, and updates like that would be helpful to know as a board member.
Adam, that was June 18th that meeting went down. Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, with, uh, all due respect to Ms. Taylor, I think you're receiving that update, uh, right now in this principal's report. So this is, uh, very transparent of Mike to share the process and all of the behind the scenes machinations that he went through. But I oversaw closely the process that was used to move through the development and, uh, very democratic process to, uh, elect the staff steering committee members. And, uh, this update, uh, shows a big advancement in how So Hegan is making decisions. And I'm, uh, in full support of the process Mike, Dana, John, others use, uh, in this process. Because it involved and included faculty input. It involved elections where, uh, teachers were able to elect their own representatives to this committee. Um, but it doesn't mean that everyone's happy with the process or the result because not everybody gets their way. And this is a school system where not every, where everybody, nobody, I'm sorry, nobody gets their way all the time. And so while, uh, in the process, there are certainly, uh, feelings involved and emotions sometimes. This process was very fair, very transparent and is absolutely going to make So Hegan, uh, a place where even more input from teachers is, is qualified in the decision-making process.
Can you tell me who the representatives are or would that be non-public?
Who represented who?
Who the representatives are?
Sure, yeah.
We, we can provide that information at the next, in the next principal's report.
Good idea.
That'd be great.
But at the time of this board report, when it was not finalized, that's why you don't have it, Laura.
Okay, thank you. And once again, I, I have like a whole bunch of red ink all over the handbook, but it's so nice to have the handbook. And I wanted you to know, I really appreciated the work you did.
Wonderful, thanks Laura. Yeah, go ahead.
Two last questions.
Take your time.
One, um, enrollment, can we get the enrollment for like number of kids who like, I, I think I asked this before, like especially looking at the eighth grade coming to ninth, how many have left our school system to go to a private school or charter school or something? And then also can you see how many new kids have come into our district as well as invite?
Yeah, we, we, we have that as we get closer to the school, school year, we have that. And, uh, we, as we register new students, new to So Hegan and, uh, students that were in eighth grade that originally declared like, hey, I'm going to be looking somewhere else. Or did, uh, like, so thirteen were looking. I think five chose another school and eight are coming to So Hegan, but I'll, I'll hold onto that number.
The October one numbers every year are the official enrollment numbers and that report is where we really track every single kid. Did they come, did they leave, are they homeschooled, so? Exactly, yeah, that's exactly it.
Okay, then my last question is, we'll try for you, Adam, why do we have Friday off before Labor Day? That's new, we've never done, and I, the parents really know about it.
Yeah, so we did it last year, although there was some changes made at the school year last year that involved other things. Um, but last year was the first school year we started before Labor Day in a long time. And it was because where Labor Day fell, it was the latest possible Labor Day, which meant we would have had a super long summer and then followed by a very short summer because Labor Day would have been moved up almost a whole week the following year. So we'd have two weeks shorter summer, so anyway, we started before Labor Day last year. So this year, uh, we also are starting before Labor Day because Labor Day is almost as late. Um, but, uh, feedback from parents was we want a long Labor Day weekend. So we're maintaining the four-day Labor Day weekend. Also, there is some advantage in schools. We like starting school with a three-day week and then a four-day week and then a five-day week. It does condition our students and maybe even our staff members to the rigors of being back, uh, in school. And so having a three, four, or five start is desirable. But next year's school calendar will come up, and it was voted on, it was approved by the.
Friday off?
Oh yeah, the school calendar was approved, I don't set the school calendar.
I remember it's Friday day off.
So, but the next year's school calendar is coming, uh, in September and so you'll have a chance to look at that one.
Right, yeah. All right, any other, um, additional comments for Mike? Yeah. Fine.
Uh, the first, you know, yeah, the, um, it's the student that we know that are homeschooled and that we're, you know, affiliated with. So I, and the handbook, you know, is a work in progress, you know, it hasn't been updated in a while, you know, we kind of put it together. We, we expect the handbook to be, uh, dramatically updated prior to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, but we did make some updates, John worked, uh, pretty, you know, pretty diligently over the summer to kind of modernize it with Amanda and, uh, just to, to get something that is more of a reflection of, of the work that we're doing. Uh, but we know there are some, uh, archaic and outdated things in there. And, uh, but we need to go through a process to have those not included in the handbook, so.
Okay, any further comments on the, uh, principal's report? Seeing none. Uh, next on our agenda item is the community council update. Are you even waiting so patiently to get down to this, please?
Okay, so yesterday we had our first executive meeting of the year. And our main priority right now is to work on the community council retreat, which is something that we typically do like after we elect the freshman, grade rep and the at-large representative. So we have a full council. Um, and it's just to work on getting everybody in shape for council and getting familiar with the rules. And, um, we're working hard on it this year because we want to work on the tone of council, which we definitely have recognized last year wasn't the best, especially with the, like crazy hybrid meetings. So that's kind of our top priority. And then elections are coming up pretty soon when school starts on the twentieth for our freshmen. And then we have our at-large representatives. And the only other thing that I had to add a question about was, um, the search for community members for council. Um, and we are wondering how many applicants there were for that.
Thanks for the update, I, I just, um, oh, didn't even, comments for community council, I have one, anyone else has one, I'll just go first. You're, uh, you have a seat at this board, right, every meeting? And just wanted you to know that, um, uh, whatever the community council wants to present to the board, there, you can, it's you, your, not you personally, but your body, uh, decision-making process that can put anything in your, what, what you're communicating to us. So I guess it doesn't always have to be something that maybe is even completed in terms of, uh, adopting policy or amending policy or something. But if there's a concern or a question or an accolade, or you like a direction or some movement, or you have a comment or critique as a community council, if you want to provide that feedback to us, this was a great opportunity and forum to do it. So maybe as, when you're on your retreat and figuring out the tone and, and all of this for your, for your year, you could include a discussion about, about that, about how and what do you want to communicate to the school board through your seat at our table. So I just wanted to pass that to you, okay, sound good? Great. All right, perfect. Uh, Laura, did you have a question or comment about the community council update?
No, sounds great.
Okay. All right, um, next is, uh, board to appoint a community council member, a community member to community council. Right, and that comes to the letters which, uh, were not, uh, provided in our packet but would be received during email. As far as I know, we have five letters. That square with your understanding?
Yes. How many vacancies are we filling?
Uh, I believe it is three, is that correct?
Yeah, there's one that was a student that we committed.
Was it for sure a student because his father has the same zip?
I don't know.
It, it was writ, written as a student and certainly, certainly he is eligible to apply for his position. There's nothing that, that prevents him from doing it. It goes to his qualifications but not his eligibility.
Okay, uh, so, questions? How many vacancies are there? I, my understanding it was three, is that an error?
So there are, according to the bylaws. According to the bylaws, which I'm, I believe these to be up, haven't been updated since twenty-twelve, does that sound right? Community council bylaws? There are five community representatives. But the town representation is to closely reflect the school population, which I believe last year was four and one, was what we did last year. Does that sound right? Yeah. Mr. Foreman Chair?
So I didn't, um, forgive me, so how many vacancies are there?
Five.
Five vacancies. And five letters. Is there really a decision to make?
There is a motion to be made.
I mean, there's no selection to make, are we duty-bound to fill the bit of the vacancies or what?
So point of clarification of those five positions for our Amherst and one for Malvern. Now, it happens to be that we have that ratio in the letters. But you got to make sure that if they're all Amherst, then you wouldn't be able to select all of them.
Right, fair point. I don't, I guess the other question, Laura, I heard you, uh, just, just one second. Yeah, I guess to the point about this student, is there any, um, do you, any qualific, minimum qualifications that aren't met? And like, what kind of what, him raised, that, that check, anything else?
One of the towns.
Just a red is it?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Uh, Laura, you had a statement or comment?
Yes, I would prefer not to have a student in this position. We've gotten letters before where students are just confused about how to go about entering community council. And I'd like to save the position for a, a community member if someone else comes forward over a student.
Yes, go ahead, thank you Laura, go ahead.
Clarification, is there any limitation to him being a student, you just have to be a member of the community, so we can't deny.
Right, I mean, if a, a faculty member who lived in town could run, could apply to be a community member.
So if he finds that he's an error this way, he could always resign as community appointment and run.
Well, he has, he has multiple paths to get there, he chooses to take them if we reject it, yeah.
I guess then to Laura's question and then.
It's up to the board, this is a, an appointment made by the board that you can choose to make or choose not to make.
Right, thank you, yes, go ahead Steve.
I'll make a motion to start, to appoint the four adult letters, Mike can deal with the student who applied separately. So I, I will reappoint Lisa Eastland, Janet Dickinson, um, what's her name, C. Grayson, I think it was.
Christine.
Christine Grayson and Heather Stein to the community council for, uh, after them here.
I'll second.
Need further discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote, uh, him?
Him, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Whoever, yes, Stephanie?
Yes.
Sorry, just.
Laura?
Hey, Olivia.
All right, thank you Steve for making that motion.
Now it's a yellow motion.
Yeah.
We appoint, uh, Eddie Barnes for the, uh, community council for, uh, after them here.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second to my Stephanie?
I've never really heard of a student going for a community position like this, I've always assumed that would just be adults. But I don't really see a problem with it, they could run at-large, which is what I would have expected them to do if they're a student at So Hegan. But I guess if this is how they want to get into council, that's okay too, I guess.
He could always, like again, he could always resign the position if he decides he wants to run as a student if he didn't understand the process.
Would he, would he need to resign before, oh, that's good.
Couple things, according to the bylaws that I remember correctly, but I also just slack the community council advisors who are, shouldn't be available, but they have made themselves available. And they said, uh, a couple of them, they have, nothing says you can't be. They've never encountered this situation because there's multiple, uh, ways you can be part of community council via the student. I don't think that was the spirit, if, you know, as I learned about community council, the spirit of why you have the community reps.
One of us, there's a, like reach out to him and see if this is what his intention was to run? Or he didn't understand that, because he's a freshman, so maybe he didn't understand the process. And when he enters So Hegan, he'll be able to run either as a class rep or an at-large rep. Maybe he doesn't understand the process, maybe clarify and ignore the point of the next.
I would suspect this young man knows exactly.
Well, if he knew what he was doing, I'm intrigued. Yeah, it looks like he has been in leadership and service for quite some time.
He was chosen by his peers to give the graduation speech for eighth grade graduation as well. Well done it was, I will say.
I mean, no one's applied and what's the worst that could happen?
Yeah.
And we can encourage him to run the appropriate way or the, I shouldn't say appropriate, the regular way.
As a student.
Yes, exactly.
I feel differing. Out of curiosity, wonder the community council, wonder the freshman vote? It says the twentieth, or like right after on a community council.
Okay.
Grab the mic if you could, I'm sorry, people at home are letting me know who can't be heard, that's you, Ms. Peters and.
I think it's going to be, um, either the week of, the second or third week of school, I think around the eighteenth or nineteenth. I'm not entirely sure of the exact date, but our at-large elections are going to be the twentieth at our night meeting.
And our So Hegan meeting isn't till the twenty-seventh. So we could wait and see if he gets elected. We can act upon.
And, and speaking as a politician, if he gave the graduation speech at the eighth grade, he's got name recognition for the election as a freshman rep.
Right. And, um, do we have the ability to extend, relieve it open the extra month? Okay, and know if there are any rules or?
That's a motion is withdrawn.
Have John do the vote, have John.
Yeah, I mean, by voting no is not a reflection on the student in any way. I think, I hope that that's, the student is listening that that's clear. I got to say, I'm sort of, of two minds, I mean, pretty savvy. If it is, I'll say this, regardless of how this came about, if the spirit of the, of the community representative, the community council is for a non-student, then the community council bylaws should be amended to, to, to reflect that intent. So if, if, if that's, if that's what we, a majority of, of us think that should happen, then we should make that happen as well at our next meeting and, and consider it over the next, uh, month. Because, um, if that's what this is supposed to do, then we should make, we should clarify the ambiguity, if to the extent one exists. if that's what this is supposed to do, then we should make, we should clarify the ambiguity, if, to the extent one exists.
Would that be our job to modify the bylaws or their job?
Their job, you said. Yeah. Well, then, you can tell us what the results of that is at our next meeting. Okay. All right, let's call the, the vote. I'll start and say no, clever no at this time. Stephanie?
No at this time.
George?
Peters, no at this time.
Pam?
Bronser, no.
Steve?
No.
Laura?
Taylor, no.
Okay, there we go. Seven no's. At this times. At least. Okay. Moving on.
Mr. Chair, the CNA CIP update is actually something we're, we're going to give in September, so we can move past that.
Okay.
And we have two other things left on the agenda, the curriculum report that Mr. Chamberlain's going to provide, and a pilot about our out-of-school suspension program. I would like to dismiss my staff by nine, if possible. They're welcoming back our teachers tomorrow, bright and early, so I can, I would suggest that if we, we attempt to get both of these done in fifteen minutes, or perhaps we table one to the next meeting. But in those, in priority order, the pilot program is most important to deal with tonight.
Okay, that's fair enough, and, and I can imagine that our discussion with Mr. Chamberlain will, is gonna last far longer than fifteen minutes. Which,
Really?
I can, I can, because I think, I think, I, you know, this, just a little bit I've heard you say about it already, is, is very intriguing, and I'd like to hear more, since it's here, since it's on the agenda. I, I can imagine our board members would have follow-up questions, which could double the time. If you talk for ten minutes, it's gonna last twenty. And I don't want to cut that conversation short, because I think that our community will really benefit from hearing it, what you say, and our response to it, and it, and it, it, I know that it responds directly to, one particularly, community members' passionate belief in curriculum mapping, and you have presenting an answer to that question. At least for the moment. So I think that deserves a full-spectrum event, and not a rushed, oh my god, we gotta get out of here, discussion.
Well, there might be some synergy then, Mr. Chair, because there are two other boards that are jealous that this topic was placed on the South Heagan Board Agenda. So the SAU Board and the Amherst Board have both asked also here a similar update. So perhaps, the SAU Board is going to be meeting twice in September, four days apart. So perhaps we add this to one of those two evenings and, and solve our time issue this evening, but also solve the issue of the other boards wanting to hear the information. The only downside is Mr. Chamberlain was up all night, very nervous. Having never presented to a board before, and so he's got all psyched up.
Yes.
So if you can withstand, you know, letting that, that, all that anticipation go, perhaps.
That sounds like a lovely plan, very efficient. All right, so, final item of the evening is Mike Berry to present the pilot OSS. And, and does anyone have the page in the agenda? That is. It's gotta be towards the bottom.
Like, one twenty-five?
One twenty-four.
Sorry, I was in the second piece.
Okay. You go away.
Yeah, so, I think, what I'd like first to, like to say is, I think this is a direct reflection of the conversation that we had with Steve Chambers and in our partnership with the Assistant Superintendent role. We are taking a look at, if you notice in the principal's report, kind of guided and supportive student accountability, you know, through a, a process, you know, giving students the opportunity to, to kind of change their behavior while kind of like keeping them safe, and making sure that they are able to, you know, stay, you know, connected to the school. This is a reflection of that conversation. And so if you look at this, this is something that Steve had in Hopkinton, and, and when we talked a little bit about what we wanted to do, he said, well, hey, I've, I've kind of done that. And so John and, and Steve spent some, a good bit of time, kind of like, kind of hashing this out. I, I myself kind of worked with John about basically like how we could like pull off the like logistics. And at the end of the day, when you have an out-of-school suspension, that's not something that you want to do. And it's, it's not a, a tool to change behavior that, you know, any principal wants to use. And, but what, at the end of the day, sometimes you have to, you know, depending on what, what's occurred. And at the same time, you want to make sure that student and family knows that you're not judging them, that you care about them, that you want them to stay connected to the school, you want them to feel supported, you want them to know that we are, you know, not just being punitive and not caring about their, you know, their state of mind while they're on suspension. The other piece is sometimes when you have a, a student out for anywhere from three to ten days, depending on it, you know, that's a long time to be disconnected, especially in a, in a time like this. And so, as you, as you read through this, you know, what we're hoping to do is, when we do suspend a student, that we are able to have an adult connect with them, you know, during the time that they're out, and there's some pieces into, in like, in kind of like routines of, of the week, or, or the time that they're gonna suspend it, that we will follow to make sure that we stay connected. And we will be, you know, funding this using our substitution line. And you can see, something, you know, the, kind of like the, the expectations of the students and what the mentors will do. And then you'll see kind of what we'll be like focusing on, and we see if, if it's an effective tool for us. And so, I'll field any questions, and Steve can help me, from experience, field any questions about it. But the, the, the big thing is, you know, to keep the students connected to the school and feeling part of it, and feeling like, even though they might have made a misstep or had a, in a moment of weakness, that we still want them to be successful academically. And feel that, you know, they, they're still cared about.
I'll just start off with a question. Where, where take place outside the potential locations? Yeah, so that's sort of the TBD item too, in terms of the where of this mentoring is, some ideas, but it's TBD specifically and, and how that looks, yeah. Right, but, but principally, it's out, oh, out of school.
It's out of school suspension.
It's gotta be.
These are something like weapons, drugs, alcohol, fighting, right? Some of the, kind of like, non-negotiables, like we have to, right? And, and, and so when that happens, you know, what do you want to do? And I think that's where we would kind of, in this pilot, work it out with, you know, the families in the town and, and, and the public places where we could, we could work. And I, I think that's, that's why it's TBD, and, and we'd be really careful on how we would go about that.
So, um, well, first of all, I love, I love the idea, I think it's a great idea. I was going to ask you, how many times roughly does that situation present itself within an academic school year?
For me, at South Heagan, last year's not something that I can really base it off.
They're all out of school.
And, but, in conversation with people who worked at, you know, at South Heagan, or here in a, in a non-COVID year, you're, you're talking, depends on the year really, and depends on the culture of the building. But, you know, OSS, you, you, you know, I've heard the range is anywhere from ten to twenty-five of those type of suspensions a year. It's not, it's not a lot.
Mike hasn't been less than that, from what I remember. Because I get copies of all those letters and documents and all of them, and I think two years ago, there may have been ten or twelve the whole year. And some were for a day, some were for longer, but.
And there, and there's a system, there's already a system in place that if something happens, you can have it reduced if you participate in, in, in kind of like a rehabilitation and education type of program through the student service offices, and, and, and through, through the counseling office. So, there's a lot of support for this. I don't think we would have to use it, but what we often, but what we want to do is have something in place. And, and we have people in mind that we think would be good mentors. That's, that's, this is a reflection of us thinking that we have people that we could seek out and partner with, who would be into this type of work. So, don't think we'd be often, we think we have some people who want to partner with us and want to be supportive of students. And then, when it happened, we've worked with the families to see with, you know, how they would receive it.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, just real quick, so I'm assuming the time, how OSS is progressive, depending on the infraction?
Yeah.
How is that determined, and like, who makes that determination? Is it just you, or is it?
Yeah.
How does that work?
It, it depends on the, the infraction, you know, the, and so, you'll see, most of the time is the dean of students will be making the decision. Sometimes it gets to the principal level, and, and every so often, the principal and the superintendent or assistant superintendent will kind of, kind of collaborate on, you know, where we're at, on, on an out-of-school suspension. Most building principals that, you know, list of rule, I'd see like up to ten days, up to ten days, and then, but if there's a suspension that needs to be longer, and sometimes there is, and that's super rare, that's a superintendent type of.
Yeah, so, so by state law and district policy, only I have the ability to suspend students out of, out of school, but I can delegate that authority to the, to the building principal, which I do every year. They get a letter from me. I delegate, I hereby delegate you with the authority to, and then, if I'm not the one who suspends a kid for the first ten days, then I have the ability to add on another ten days, or make a recommendation to the board for an expulsion here.
So I'm here, it's more art than science, you kind of look at the infraction itself.
Here, at, at South Heagan, it's definitely kind of a, you know, the, just based on the culture and how the school has operated for many years, you know, it, it's a lot of opportunities to change the behavior before you get to that point. And, but sometimes they're such a significant event, you know, like a weapon or, or, you know, illegal substance, that is just kind of like non-negotiable, this is what it is, and then that will dictate the length of the suspension. And, yeah.
So I guess it, it not only depended on the infraction itself, but also the student?
Yeah, like, it could be a repeat, you know, repeat type of thing, and that could change a variable. But at the end of the day, just know, we, we don't, we do not want to have students in an out-of-school suspension, and we don't want to have schools, students in in-school suspension. So the goal through our guided and supportive accountability process is to not get to that point. And I think, you know, with John and, and the approach that we're having, that we, we're changing it, right? You know, we're, we're changing the way we, you know, work with students and families. I'm really optimistic that we will not have to use this as often, but it's really supportive if we do.
I, I really like it. I think it's worth the pilot, at least, and I don't see any reason why it wouldn't become standard operating procedure. One, the duty of the mentor, I was just thinking of this through, it needs a little bit more to it, like, not expected to teach or counsel, to provide safe and appropriate environment to continue studies. Okay, conversation is encouraged, but should be limited in scope. Okay, kind of get that, but the day, if, this is from eight-thirty to three, so it should say in there, for example, if the duty is to not let the student out of their visual line of sight, except for the bathroom, maybe, or, or whether do you need, is that a gendered thing? Where actually I do need to follow you into the bathroom, so that you're not doing up to some shenanigans? Is that part of the duty? I think there's could be a little bit more framework on that. What about the lunch breaks? We're gonna eat lunch together, we're going our separate ways. So what about physical activity, getting up, walking around, you can't just sit there for the whole entire school day, that's not represented, so the walk around the block? Is that the library, is that, that an acceptable and encouraged activity, or, or some framework on that? So that you might attract more mentors and figure out what that day looks like, and if it's not quite here yet, I, I certainly wouldn't stand in the way, I'm just, it's my, my initial feedback, because what, what, how that day really looks like for the mentor, to make it really productive, and for the, for both the mentor and the mentee. Go ahead.
I, I'll, I'll just say, so, in a hundred years of being a superintendent here, I never would have thought to come up with something like this. So this, this, this is, this is Steve Chamberlain bringing years of experience, knowledge, and expertise that I will never have in, in my career. And so, we're benefiting from his experience in Hopkinton with a highly successful program. So I'm, I'm very comfortable as written, knowing that there's some, we're going to adjust based on the situation. So, I, I'm, I'd prefer that we let the, the pilot go as is, but we'll take your, your input into consideration.
Yeah, go ahead, Steph.
Yeah, so Steve and I, we had that brief conversation over at the SAU, so I am, I'm excited about this. I, I like the idea that we're keeping the kids connected with the school, because these are the kids I have a feeling we end up losing touch with. And if we can keep that connection, I think it's a fantastic. Do we have a line item that they can pull the money from?
Yeah, we, we're gonna pull through the substitute.
Is there?
Substitute line, yeah, we feel like there is.
Well, this, this, this costs money, so if we, if we run out of money in the sub-line, we're got to go back to the old, uh, you know, sorry, you're, you know, you're out, so. Ms. Peters says volunteer to take children. So, no, we'll, we'll, we'll watch, we will watch that carefully, and if there's a run of out-of-school suspensions that have a budgetary impact.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, lots of considerations that we'll have to discuss.
And so what you have in place for in-school suspicions, suspicions, in-school suspensions, kind of lines up in the same vein? That you have a place for them to be working and having that?
Yeah, we were, we were really thoughtful about how, we were really thoughtful about how we organize that space, and, and, and so we have our campus coordinator, Robyn Bouquet, and John Berry are, have organized space, like, unless you're familiar, it's super small, it only has three spaces in it. We don't seem to have a, need to have a run-on, on that, on that tool, to, to change, you know, students' behavior. But it, it's, it's there in the backend of student services, it's connected as a window, it's, it's, it's relatively welcoming environment, but there's a rehabilitation process to that, between the social worker, the school psych, and the campus coordinator. It sits in that space in the back of it. So there's a lot of, there's gonna be some, a number of adults who are gonna be interacting with those students in the same vein, that, hey, you misstepped, you had a moment of weakness, and we're, and we're gonna, you know, kind of just try to get you to change your behavior. I, I will take this opportunity. There will be students that they need their behaviors to change, as they assimilate back into five days a week, being where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there. Doesn't mean like they're, they're, they're gonna be making these gross, these gross missteps. But having the luxury and the, and the liberties to kind of move around, and, you know, the way we ran school the last year, you know, I'm a little concerned about students being where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there, and taking care of their responsibilities. So this OSS and ISS and guided student, you know, accountability is really, it, it, it's built off of the South Heagan mission statement. You know, it's built off of, you know, respect, trust, and courage, and it's, it's directly built off of the South Heagan Six. And so we'll take everything back to that, and, and so people, at the end of the day, we want people to know that, you know, we're here to make sure that they are growing into the best version of themselves that they want to, and their families want them to. That's really what we're here, that's why you have systems like this in place.
Is there a motion?
Yes, we'd like, we'd prefer that you guys adopt this pilot.
I'll do it, you can do my second. I love this plan, I think it's great, and I think it's great that you have a assistant superintendent that already knows how to do it. So I will make the motion that would give you the green light for this plan as written.
As I was gonna say, because I love this so much, I will second this. Laura, is Laura still with us?
John, I'm gonna abstain on this one, I didn't have time to prepare.
Okay. Well, if you were gonna vote no, you were gonna lose, so, it's just fine. All right, Laura's vote is abstained, correct?
Taylor abstained.
There we go. Pam?
Bronser, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Clever, yes.
Ron, yes.
George, yes.
Peters, yes.
Here we go. All right, wonderful. Any non-public matters?
So I have one nomination to make, I'm happy to make the nomination in public, but if there are any questions, we should go into non-public to discuss. It's for a Spanish teacher. If there are no questions, I'll be happy to make that nomination here.
Laura, do you have any questions about the nomination of a Spanish teacher in public?
I would, I would have to abstain. Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
All right, then I will place into nomination, Ms. Jaclyn Hathaway Rube, will be a Spanish teacher at Sohhegan High School. She is on column D, step 11, which means her starting salary is $64,798. So the process is, there should be a motion to elect. I'll make the motion to elect.
Any second?
John?
Yes, Laura?
My only concern is, how many Spanish teachers do we have now, and do we have that many Spanish students?
So this, this is a replacement of an existing position, someone that left us, so this is not a new position by any means. It's, it's a simple one-to-one replacement, and we have, we do have a number of Spanish teachers, and we have quite a few Spanish students. I don't have the numbers offhand, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. We'll call the vote? Him?
Bronster, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Glover, yes?
Ron, yes. Peters, yes.
Laura?
Taylor abstained.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, anyone? Yes, hey, go ahead, make it.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, I'll second.
Glover, yes?
Ron, yes.
George?
Peters, yes.
Pam?
Bronster, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
All right, we're done, thank you guys, thank you very much.